Yeah.
I don't need to see you, you can do it.
Nobody needs to.
So are we going to have a conference like right now? Like Tony's just gonna happen right now?
It depends on the volume. The volume is like a...
Was for us or comments? Right now, or do we deserve our comments to the board?
Oh, we deserve it.
Don't worry about it.
I don't want to hear this. I never watch this.
I never remember.
I remember it.
All right, it's six oh two. Like to get going here to start our budget hearing that's scheduled first. So I'd like to have a roll call, please.
Mr. Gentry. Mr. Guerin. Mr. Troy. Mr. Quagliano.
Here.
Mrs. Melendi.
Here.
Mrs. Meyerino. Mr. Craddy.
Okay, we have a quorum. Did he? You can see him.
We can see him. We can hear him.
Okay, all right. So if we could stand for the pledge of allegiance. I'll lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're on to item number three. This is our budget hearing. Mr. Altmaier, are you going to present some information?
I am, thank you very much. In front of you, you all should have a bound copy of this year's fiscal year 21's proposed budget. Administration is pleased to present the FY 21 budget. To this date, we have presented numerous drafts of the budget at a very high level. So I will cover various points and try to get through this painlessly. You know, I want to start with this. The budget not only reflects the strategic plan of the district, it reflects the tumultuous time that we're all in, right? The pandemic. It reflects, you know, I like to think it reflects a year of opportunity as well, and I don't want to lose sight of that. Whether it's an opportunity to improve, whether it's the additional technology that, you know, we've provided our teachers and our staff and our students, or it's remote learning and remote learning itself and the great job that curriculum has done and our teachers have done. The budget reflects the continued opportunity to drive operational efficiency because, well, we have to, we had to, and we're going to have to do that in the years to come. It also reflects the opportunity in which, well, sustainability reigns, right? We have 5.7 megawatts of solar power behind us that's going to be clicked on pretty shortly. In fact, two of the three solar arrays are up and running. And by the way, it's the largest solar array in the state for any school district, as well as the purchase of 14 propane buses and a 2,000 gallon tank that's parked out back. So this is a good budget. It does reflect the strategic plan of the district, and I didn't want that to go unsaid. This draft versus the last draft, the display draft reflects changes in salaries as a result of the current remote learning environment and other miscellaneous adjustments, and I'll talk about those shortly. But at a very high level, operating revenues in the proposed budget are 110 million 889,000 with operating expenditures at 110 million 246,000 with an operating surplus of 643,000. The assumptions made within the plan reflect the most recent events as well as the current estimates regarding the implications of COVID-19. There is a chart in your memo that you could follow through that I will highlight as well. There are numerous documents as part of your budget package from the financial implications of COVID to budget assumptions in summary, as well as the display draft by fund, the detailed expenditure report, the key expenditures and revenue detail. The state budget forms are included, as well as charts and graphs, providing the board as well as the community a visual perspective of the FY 21 proposed budget. Material modifications from the display draft, we talked about that earlier. The biggest reduction was a salary reduction of $480,000. That's the estimated decrease as a result of furloughing employees in the remote environment through the middle of October. Substitute teaching, supervision and extra duty were decreased by 20%. That is also the remote period for which we would expect and anticipate some potential savings there. On the flip side of that, though, we have seen an increase in private facility numbers, so we did have to increase that line item by approximately $100,000. And curriculum supplies, we increased by $75,000 primarily as a result of project leadway for which we needed to put a little more into that bucket. And then we did our departmental reclasses as we have always done. You know, we talked about the time we're in under the pandemic, and from a revenue standpoint, right, we know it's going to impact certain line items from registration fees to rental fees to food services, revenues and expenses, interest earnings, right? The economy is down and we had to cut back on interest earnings. State funding is held flat with prior year being held harmless, and that's kind of still a risk in the future if the state's going to have the funds and be able to issue the bonds to obtain the funds to make all four payments. But we have, we have set the budget with a hold harmless type of position. We did decrease overall state funding by 133,000 approximately, and that is the result of transportation reimbursement. The proration percentage provided by ISB was a little less than in prior year, so we did have to cut that back a little bit. On the positive side, we have CARES Act funding of additional $184,000 baked into the budget. On the expense side, other than the previous expenses I previously noted, contract custodial is decreasing approximately or increasing approximately 209,000. Unemployment insurance is increasing. Energy cost reduction primarily as a result of the solar arrays behind us, as well as just not having students in our building will provide us some extra energy cost savings. And then we have COVID supplies and technology supplies that we had to add into the budget as a result of the pandemic. So totaling approximately $2 million between revenues and expenses. The revenue assumptions haven't changed from the previous draft, so I'm not going to go through those unless you have any questions. But at a very high level, the summary of the operating results, operating revenues are budgeted to increase approximately 1.04 million. Locally, property taxes are increasing 1.4 million. Other local revenues, food service, registration fees, interest and rental fees are decreasing by approximately 755,000. State revenues are held harmless. We talked about that decreasing 133,000 due to transportation claims. And lastly, federal funding is increasing by approximately 483,000, driven by the CARES Act funding of 184,000. National school lunch increased by approximately 175,000, and the idea grant of 142,000, and most of that is carryover from prior year. Operating expenditures are budgeted to increase approximately 554,000 versus the FY 20 budget, primarily driven by the increase in salaries and benefits, a decrease in capital projects, as well as a decrease in supplies, and we'll talk about those. Salaries and benefits within the current budget increased 2.4 million primarily as a result of these three things. HESA, HEA, HESA non-union salary increases approximate 2.8 million. Benefits increased 1.2 million primarily due to health insurance as well as TRS and payroll taxes. And that is all offset by salary reductions, which we noticed, which we noted earlier, due to declining enrollment, that's headcount reductions, and the furloughed employees piece during the remote period approximating 1.6 million. Supplies and materials are budgeted to decrease approximately 453,000 from the FY 20 budget, primarily driven by a 10% cut in building supplies as well as a reduction in food costs as a result of the first quarter remote learning. In addition, we talked about electric and overall energy costs are decreasing by approximately 200,000 because of what we are doing with the solar array system. Capital expenditures for the operations and maintenance fund have been reduced 1.4 million to approximate 1.8 million. Last year's budget approximated 3.2 million, and the large capital projects expected for FY 21 primarily include the new roofing system over at the high school as well as asphalt patching throughout the district. As a result, the FY 21 budget, proposed budget reflects a current operating surplus of $643,000. As always, there's always continued unknowns and challenges that we may face with this budget, and I think the biggest challenge is the state of Illinois and the economy. We also have continued unknowns with health insurance, right? We had some favorable months in FY 20 at the end of the year primarily driven by the pandemic. We are starting to see that come back and creep back up. We have met with the insurance committee today, and we have some information to share at the next board meeting on overall health insurance. But we do feel, I do feel, that the current budget for health insurance is a good one. In addition, I talked about from a visual perspective, we included charts and graphs for you to look at. With that, as such, I would like, administration would like to make a recommendation for the Board of Education to approve the FY 21 proposed budget. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those at this time.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Altmaier, for your presentation. Does anyone on the board have any questions, any discussion items concerning the budget presented?
Mr. Altmaier, does this budget, so when you're talking about the COVID expenses, how far have you planned in the budget for COVID? Meaning, you know, this is expected to ramp back up when it gets colder? I mean, are they, are we going to have more expenses? Have we kind of tried to, I know you can't fork, you know?
That's a really great question. So food services and furloughing of employees, we just lowered the budget through the remote period approximately 20%. The majority of whether it was technology supplies or whether it was, you know, face masks or things of that nature that we need, those have all baked in and have been baked in for the full year. That being said, we don't know how much of that product we're going to use because we don't know when we're going to come back, you know, 100% into our building. So I do feel, I think, that the budget dollars that we have set aside for those type of supply type of items should get us through the year knowing currently where we are today, if that helps.
You know, for example, Mrs. Melendi, to give you an example, I inquired with Mr. Rinkosik and Mr. Dean earlier, or yesterday, about our supply, our PPE supply of hand sanitizers and cleaning supplies for staff once we do welcome students back. As you'll see later in the presentation, when I talk about the other factors that contribute to decision-making metrics, our PPE supply is one of those. Can we maintain an appropriate reserve for coming back? So what I learned was is we have a supply that we believe is one, maybe two months, what we are predicting used to be like with students in the building. But how quickly we go through that is an unknown. So how, you know, fortunately, our suppliers are telling us the turnaround time has improved pretty dramatically, and they're confident that they'll be able to be a quick turnaround. So that's a good sign. But how much that will cost as we move forward, we won't know until we have to use it. But having that number was a big deal. So we're in good shape fortunately, but that's the type of unknown cost that I think you're referring to.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have any budget presentation questions? Yes, Paul?
Is the, does the budget include any kind of debt restructuring for this year?
The debt restructuring is in the out years, so it doesn't impact the FY 21 budget. It would impact FY 22 and beyond.
Thanks for refreshing, thanks.
Good question. Okay. Again, I don't know if Sean, if he had any questions, and I don't know if he's going to be able to communicate.
I'm ready to. Thank you.
You're good, Sean? Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I have no further questions. So this is an item that is on our regular agenda to vote on, so that'll be there for us to vote on. So we're on to our last item, which would be public comments. And normally, public comments for this special meeting would be limited to the budget hearing, but, you know, we're going to make an allowance here to allow, we have individuals who are wanting to make public comments. So we're going to let them make their public comments at this meeting so they can get them done in case they want to move on and go somewhere else and not have to wait around for closed session. So Dan, we'll have you probably read the public comments you have to read, right? You have a few.
Is your preference that our folks are prepared to stay outside and wait until they're not...
Until the regular meeting, which is perfectly fine. No, no, if they're willing to wait, that's fine. I was just trying to accommodate them. Okay, so they'll wait for that. Okay, so there would be no public comments concerning our budget. That being the case, I'll make a motion to adjourn our budget hearing at 6:17. Second from Mr. Troy. Can I have a roll call?
Mr. Quagliano.
Yes.
Mr. Craddy.
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino.
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi.
Yes.
Mr. Guerin.
Yes.
Mr. Gentry. Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. We have adjourned our budget hearing, and then we are on. Since we're already past 6:15, we can go ahead and start. So let us come to order for our 6:15 regular board meeting at 6:18. And we have roll call for that.
Mrs. Meyerino.
Here.
Mr. Craddy.
Yeah.
Mr. Troy. Mrs. Melendi.
Here.
Mr. Guerin.
Here.
Mr. Quagliano.
Here.
Mr. Gentry.
Okay, we have a quorum. Item two is to go into closed session. So I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session at 6:19 for the items enumerated in the agenda. Second from Mrs. Meyerino. Can I have a roll call?
Mrs. Melendi. Mr. Gentry. Mrs. Meyerino.
Yes.
Mr. Guerin.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Craddy.
Yeah.
Mr. Quagliano.
Yep. Okay, we're in closed session. We'll be back at seven o'clock to head from closed session.
We have three, we have three public comments. Is our mic working here? So there are three public comments that were emailed to the superintendent inbox and I'll read them in the order in which they were received. First comment comes from Star Underwood. Dear Board members, I want you to know our family has been affected by COVID.
We are currently at home on day seventeen. It doesn't just always end on day ten of quarantine. My son, although not feeling well, has been able to continue his studies without missing a beat because of the e-learning. He's been able to engage with both teachers and students, which is aiding in his recovery. Our symptoms started early on a Wednesday morning. Had we been in school, my son would have exposed his classmates, their families, and his teachers on Monday and Tuesday. He also would be on day seventeen of no school and not sure when he'd be returning. Our teacher has been doing a fantastic job keeping students engaged and following the regular classroom rules. My son is already excelling in some areas and I've been able to witness some areas that he needs more practice in. Our teacher is always available for meetings and responds quickly to questions we have. We have been impressed with our e-learning experience. Our positivity number in our county and state are not being lowered on a consistent basis. Our numbers are increasing and it is not safe to return to the classroom. I'm concerned about sending students and faculty back into the classroom during the beginning of cold and flu season and how many children will be constantly out of school due to symptoms. This will absolutely impact their learning. With teachers having to constantly assist with washing hands and cleaning, how much learning time will be missed and will the district even have the proper supplies for our teacher to keep everyone safe? Please do not send our kids back right now, it is not safe. Second comment. Comes from Vanessa Superintendent Rowe. Watching my grandson flourish in kindergarten in the remote distance District 158 has been a remarkable experience for the child and his parents. Learning has been quite positive. Teachers and parents are doing a fabulous job. This is a great opportunity for parents to learn. This is a great opportunity for parents also to spend quality time. Having had COVID-19 in our family, I believe remote learning is essential. A positive diagnosis of COVID-19 doesn't affect only the child. It affects all the family and extended family members of that child or children having a fourteen-day quarantine, medical testing and fees, loss of income, and possibly a job. Seeing this recently firsthand, an epidemic will start very quickly if one child exposes others before a diagnosis. Not to mention the legal ramifications on the school district. Please continue distance learning. Concerned granny, Vanessa R. Novak. And the last comment, uh, is signed from the Spitzok family. While I am very happy for those that are thriving, but my family is not. This is causing a huge emotional and financial strain on my family. I have a kindergartner who used to wake up so excited for school, and now she cries every morning to please not make her go on the computer. My other child, who has an IEP and is in the ECC program, cries every morning so hard that she has vomited more than once. She has a speech delay but has been able to clearly scream "No computer, I go school" over and over again. In addition, both of my children have started to pee their pants multiple times a week, and my oldest has even started to wet her bed. The CDC has clearly stated this is worse on the children's physical and emotional health, keeping them home. My husband is a firefighter, working crazy hours, so I've had to cut my work hours to under fifteen hours a week so I can be home with my kids for e-learning. That just keeps putting us in a bigger financial hole. I've tried looking into putting my children into an in-person private school, but we simply can't afford it. We moved to this area so our children could go to the Huntley School District. And right now, I feel like the district is failing them. I just cannot see why Marengo, our surrounding town, can have... The district needs to seriously consider the damage they are doing to their students and their families. And our kids are already begging us to stop forcing them on a computer. There will come a point where I can no longer put them or myself through this emotion torture. I wake up sick to my stomach every day. I have to log them on a computer, and all three of us are in tears by ten thirty AM. How is this good for them? How is this good for anyone? We had COVID-19 back in May. It is nothing more than a common cold for the average person. I understand that some families have underlying health conditions and do not want their children at the schools, and I respect that. I love that the district gave the families the choice to attend school in person or remote. We need to give that choice back. Being completely remote is killing those families that need to work and children that don't have the attention span for a computer. With all this being said, I do want to point out three positives I have experienced. One being both my children's teachers are wonderful and email me back right away and have been extremely helpful. I had to call for Otis support twice. Both times, I started sobbing as soon as they answered the phone. The two ladies I spoke to were absolutely amazing and supportive. They helped me figure out the issue right away, and I am so grateful for them. Lastly, we signed up for the breakfast and lunch delivery. That has been absolutely amazing. It's the highlight of our day, getting to wave to the bus driver delivering the food. It has also really helped take some stress off me worrying about having to figure out what to make them. Thank you for your time.
Armstrong. Okay. We're going to get to the in-person public comments. Um, a couple of things, uh, further, uh, to remind people that it's public comments. It's your opportunity to make your statement. It's not a Q and A with the board. It's your opportunity. Uh, the board is available after the meeting. I mean, myself and others will be around if people wanted to stay around and interact and discuss items. Um, we certainly are available after the meeting. So, but it's just, this is our business meeting, and it's not a give and take necessarily during the meeting with the public. So having said all that, uh, we're going to start out with Carrie Cross. You can, you're going to have to go to the, uh, mic. I'm sorry. Yeah. No, you, actually, when you get to the mic, you can... Okay.
Hi, this is my mother. Um, I have advocated for... I have advocated for my kids from kindergarten. Um, kindergarten for us is not working. It is awful. The schedule is awful. The responses that we get are awful. Them looking at faces that's big, everything about it is just not working. My kid went from loving school to saying he wants to go to the real school for learning the real stuff. It is pointless for a kindergartner to be doing this. The next thing is, it is amazing being in a private... No one allows them to go. You know how well... I jacked my legs from seven thirty to two thirty every... This isn't what my life is supposed to be. I'm not a teacher. I'm not a school teacher. I'm not a therapist. I'm not IT. And now I'm doing all this. You guys are paying your teachers to do twice the work for half the effect. It's not working. My husband is a firefighter. I know the risks. I'm not foolish to what is happening. He comes in contact with things all the time. But this is awful and abhorrent to what you're doing to our kids' mental and physical and social abilities. You're ruining what they have and their love of tool. Um, PE is a joke. They're not getting what they're supposed to be getting. And in our county, there was forty hun- four thousand one hundred confirmed cases allegedly. That's sort of out there. A hundred and seventeen people have passed away, and I am sorry to anybody. Ninety people were from nursing homes. That leaves twenty-seven people outside of that. We have shut down our school district for twenty-seven people. This is absurd. Our kids are failing behind us. You know, you... You all, you're helping us. You're helping us. You don't answer to you guys. You answer to us, and it's not something... ...percent indicated that they would want to be fully remote this fall. That's out of over five thousand, five thousand responses. So based on that survey, we understood that this district went ahead and put plans into place for either a parent to choose fully remote or a hybrid plan. What we want to know is what changed? What changed between that time period and the time period in August when it was dictated to us that we would be going fully remote? Now, when I pull up the slides that were out there in the background, these are very ambiguous terms that the district has used. They clarify in questions with McHenry County that there's a high likelihood of forced closures, that we were weighing possible outcomes and best-case outcomes, that the risks simply don't outweigh the benefits, that there were guidance that was conflicted and didn't clarify, that our public agencies don't have a full understanding, that the option didn't sufficiently reduce in building population, that there were challenges in implementing the guidances that they understood it. And yet, none of those, those ambiguous terms aren't defined anywhere. When I ask, "What are the metrics that you need for us to be able to get back to school?" We're not given those metrics. When I ask, "What is the data that needs to be supplied to parents and staff and community members to get our kids back into school?", that's not given to us. And quite honestly, we're very disappointed in how our board is representing the wishes of the constituents. With the exception of Mr. Craddy, every one of you was elected into this position by the people that pay the taxes and by the people that reside here. And yet, not one of you has held a town hall with anybody, even virtual, to be able to address the concerns of the people that put you into this position. And that's a shame on you. You should be dictating to our superintendent what your constituents are having going on. And the fact that that hasn't happened did not step very well with you. It does not step very well with the rest of the people in this community. We've asked our union what can be done to be able to get us back into school, and the response from the union is, "We don't feel it's safe, and there needs to be proper precautions." Define "safe". Define what those proper precautions are. And yet, no information is given back to the families. We were told that the, that the school spent three hundred thousand dollars a summer on PPE and cleaning equipment. So how much actually has to be spent? What else do you need from us in order to get our kids back into the school? We were given money as part of the CARES Act. That's additional money that went out to the district that should be able to be afforded to be able to clean these buildings and see some safer students and staff. We don't feel that it's the teachers that are at fault here. You're following directions from someone else. We have good teachers in this, in this district. We have very good staff. We are going to lose those people to other districts if we don't get back to school. And unfortunately, what you don't see is the cascading effect that this decision for us not to be back in school is going to cause to this community. This is an excellent school district. I'm proud to be part of 158. We moved here and paid the taxes because we have a wonderful district with good teachers and good administrators. And yet, what you don't realize is that people are going to move. If I can go to Winnebago County and go to school there, where their rate is six point seven percent and McHenry County's is two point one percent, and my kids can be in school full-time there, then you are going to start moving people to other areas outside of, of Page Five of McHenry County and outside of Huntley. And it's going to be a cascading effect, unfortunately, on your businesses, because your businesses are going to lose money.
You need to run for that.
Uh, we are just very worried about the longevity of our district. We don't want to see this district fall ahead, fall behind. These should be leaders right now. District 158 has been in the news for all the wonderful things that we do. Let's lead McHenry County. We're the largest district here in McHenry County. Let's show that we're leaders.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next is Samantha Dabler.
Thank you so much for having us. Um, I just wanted to bring it to attention today that, um, I'm just very unhappy with everything that the board has been doing, and, um, I feel like our voices have not been heard. I feel like everything is happening in here, but I feel like out here is where the voices are, and I feel like we need to bring it to everybody's attention. Um, as a mother, I feel like I would never, and I speak for all mothers, we would never put our child into harm, and I feel like they just need, um, we need to have this be an option, um, just for all the people that are the working parents, um, and I just, um, I'm just really emotionally, I feel like my child is emotionally unstable because of this decision. Um, I feel like she is nervous every day to start school. She doesn't want to go to school. She used to love school. She's a huge extrovert, and I think she misses her friends. I think she misses her teacher. Um, so I just feel that it's just been a huge wing on her. Um, so I feel like it's been more, um, emotionally damaging to her than, um, positive. Um, my last point that I just wanted to say was, I feel like in the email that you sent to everybody, I feel that you made a comment that this wouldn't matter, that all of us coming here wouldn't matter. And I feel like that was a very manipulative narcissistic comment that you made, and saying that we, we don't matter, that we're coming here and our voices don't matter here. And I just thought that was a big, um, empty threat. And I just feel that, um, that was not, I just didn't have, I was actually not going to come until he said that. I was like, you know what? I am going to go. My voice does matter, and for my child, for all these children, I feel like they matter, and I am just ready to take the stand, and my voice will be heard. And, so yeah, I just wanted to say that, and thank you so much for having us, and I'm just letting us have an opportunity to speak.
Thank you for coming. Uh, Danielle Brennan. No, you can...
Um, okay. So pretty much, I have the same points as, um, what Sam said with, um, the email that was, that went out, um, with it feeling like this doesn't matter, we don't matter, what we have to say doesn't matter. Um, I have three children, and, um, they are literally a fight every day to sit on a screen, which you would think like I have a first grader and a third grader and a preschooler. Um, and the preschooler is actually in school, so I have to get the preschooler to school two days a week and pick her up from school, yet while I have two other children that are supposed to be on their screens that fight me every day, that don't want to be staring at a computer anymore, that want to go to school, that, um, and the first grader, um, who should be learning reading, writing, spelling, all of that, it's impossible for me to be teaching him what he needs to do and learn to be where even my third grader was at, at that age. Um, but, um, and then for them to be supposed to be in school while I'm taking one, two school, all while I'm supposed to be at work, and it's impossible, um, to do that. But just emotionally, for the kids, um, not being, um, in the classroom studying and with their friends, or even to have them at different ages and not even able to have a lunch with anyone, or eating lunch by themselves in their bedroom where their desk is, um, while the other one is still in school, not on lunch, and you can't even meet with friends for, you know, to have that free time that they're supposed to have. Um, but, yeah. Um...
Thank you very much. This is Brenna's Law. It's Nick... Hey, I, uh, sorry about that. Thought it was an N, that's what it was going to be. Sorry about that.
All right. So I'm not going to reiterate a lot of the points that have already been raised here. I'd like to stop this my comments by stating that we know the quality of the teachers in this district. We have a first grader, a fourth grader, and a seventh grader. And right now, we have the, actually, there are comparison in portion that our first grader has the exact same teacher that our seventh grader had in first grade. So we know the quality of the teachers. So anything I say here in no way or shape or form denigrates the teachers or the efforts that they're putting forth. It's the fault of the medium that instructions taken. So this is our first grader. This is Michaela. Okay? This is a site that my wife is facing every morning, which she gets to put her on. put our child into harm. And I feel like they just need, um, we need to have this be an option, um, just for all the people that are the working parents, um, and I just, um, I'm just really, um, emotionally, I feel like my child is emotionally unstable because of this issue, this, this decision. Um, I feel like she is nervous every day to start school. She doesn't want to go to school. She used to love school. She's a huge extrovert and I think she misses her friends. I think she misses her teacher. Um, so I just feel that is just been a huge wing on her. Um, so I feel like it's been more, um, emotionally damaging to her than, um, positive. Um, my last point that I just wanted to say was, I feel like in the email that you sent to everybody, I feel that you made a comment that this wouldn't matter, that all of us coming here wouldn't matter. And I feel like that was a very manipulative narcissistic comment that you made and saying that we, we don't matter, that we're coming here and our voices don't matter here. And I just thought that was a big, um, empty threat. And I just feel that, um, that was not, I just didn't have, I was actually not going to come until he said that. I was like, you know what? I am going to go. My voice does matter and for my child, for all these children, I feel like they matter and I am just ready to take the stand and my voice will be heard. And so, yeah, I just wanted to say that. And thank you so much for having us and, um, just letting us have an opportunity to speak.
Thank you for coming. Uh, Danielle Brennan. No, you can.
Um, okay, so pretty much this, I have the same points as, um, what Sam said with, um, the email that was, that went out, um, with it feeling like this doesn't matter, we don't matter, what we have to say doesn't matter. Um, I have three children and, um, they are literally a fight every day to sit on a screen, which you would think like I have a first grader and a third grader and a preschooler. Um, and the preschooler is actually in school, so I have to get the preschooler to school two days a week and pick her up from school, yet while I have two other children that are supposed to be on their screens that fight me every day, that don't want to be staring at a computer anymore, that want to go to school, that, um, and the first grader, um, who should be learning reading, writing, spelling, all of that, it's impossible for me to be teaching him what he needs to do and learn to be where even my third grader was at, at that age. Um, but, um, and then for them to be supposed to be in school while I'm taking one, two school, all while I'm supposed to be at work and it's impossible, um, to do that. But just emotionally for the kids, um, and not being, um, in the classroom studying and with their friends or even to have them at different ages and not even able to have a lunch with anyone or eating lunch by themselves in their bedroom where their desk is, um, while the other one is still in school, not on lunch and you can't even meet with friends for, you know, to have that free time that they're supposed to have. Um, but, yeah, um.
Thank you very much. It's a burnout floor. It's Nick. Hey, I, sorry about that. Thought it was an N, that's what it was going to be. Sorry about that.
All right. So I'm not going to reiterate a lot of the points that have already been raised here. I'd like to stop this by commenting that we know the quality of the teachers in this district. We have a first grader, a fourth grader, and a seventh grader. And right now, we have the, actually, there are comparison in portion that our first grader has the exact same teacher that our seventh grader had in first grade. So we know the quality of the teachers. So anything I say here in no way or shape or form denigrates the teachers or the efforts that they're putting forth. It's the fault of the medium that instructions taken. So this is our first grader. This is Michaela. Okay? This is a site that my wife faces every morning, which she gets to put her on, uh, on her Chromebook for her first date. Uh, my wife was a teacher in District 54. Uh, she has her Masters in Literacy. Thank God. And thank God she's a superwoman that she is because she's the woman who wrangles our three children at home, walks them through their instructions, makes sure that they get to those new meetings on time, make sure that they complete, they complete their assignments on time. Thank God for her, thank God for her educational background. Walking through the part of the first grader's day, okay? They have the greeting for the morning session. Understand, every school does this, this is where you go, what day of the week, you know, all that fun stuff. Then the actual nothing bulk happens. Reading instruction happens. More often than not, it's a recorded video because a teacher can't record the Zoom meeting because that's not allowed. So they post a video of them reading the book and then they break into small groups. My wife has told me that there's maybe give or take about fifteen and twenty minutes of direct instruction that happens during this time, including, uh, when you add the small group sessions, maybe it becomes thirty minutes out of, I think, about an hour and a half block for literacy instruction. The remainder of the time is for the students' independent work. My wife says that independent work takes my daughter approximately five to ten minutes to complete. And now we're talking about a grand total of forty minutes out of an hour and thirty minutes that has been assigned to literacy. Lunch break, Captain. Math time. Five to ten minute video is recorded by the teacher. Instruction then happens after that. Play a game on your Chromebook. Do the, do a couple of these problems. Total time for that instruction, including the direct instruction with a five to ten minute video, maybe twenty to thirty minutes for an hour and a half block. Again, thank God my wife was a teacher. She taught multiple grades, first through fourth grade. She then asked a couple mental assignments to try to flush out what my daughter's doing as well as the other girl that she's watching who are both in first grade. She's doing the best that she can. But we know, having experienced two other students moving through the first grade in District 158, how far behind our daughter is at this point? Okay? We know that this is not true equity because we know that our children, years down the road, when they're competing for a college slot, they're going to be going up against someone trying to apply to Northwestern or Northern or whatever school they apply to, from someone in Winnebago County who's been in full instruction this entire time, from someone from the St. Charles district who's been in full instruction this entire time, from someone in the Palatine district where they're now phasing in kindergarten, starting next grade, and then adding each grade progressively after that. Okay? This district is failing at students. They're falling further behind. Definitely, that's just addressing the educational qualities, not even addressing the emotional qualities of what they're suffering. My fourth grade son has rubbed a bald spot into the back of his head. He's trying to play catch up with his dad. He's in fourth grade. He's got his twenty years to play catch up with what I've got going on here. He's rubbed a stress spot in the back of his head. He is an outgoing, gregarious, friendly kid who the moment school's done, he's playing with his friends. But the stressor of having to interact through the cold medium of the screen, okay, is causing such stress that he's rubbed a bald spot into the back of his head. One other thing I also want to bring up is the way that this medium works. Yeah. Is, so my daughter, my first grader, when she's doing direct literacy instruction, okay? She's writing. She's still learning to formulate words. She's still learning to write her letters correctly and everything like that, like a first grader should be. So the teacher instructs her on that. She starts forming an E. The E's backwards. Teacher doesn't know that because the teacher can't do it through the medium that she's operating in. She then gives positive reinforcement to my daughter. My first grade daughter just got positive reinforcement for writing her letters backwards. How long is that going to take to correct? Where's the equity in that? When are my children ever going to catch up with students who have had the benefit of full instruction to this point? That's all I have to say about this.
Thank you very much. Sure. And the last comment I have here is from Dave Mathis.
I've been kneeling for like the last thirty minutes for the knees coming. I put a timer down because I'm not smart enough to realize how long three minutes is, so.
Okay.
Um, my name is Dave Mathis. I have two kids, Kirby and Cameron. They're in fourth grade and, and first grade now. Cameron, I can tell you right now is behind because he spent the second half of his kindergarten year on twenty-five minute classes online. My daughter was in speech up until COVID. She hasn't been in speech since. So she has issues with ours that she shouldn't be having issues with in fourth grade. I started doing elementary school twenty years ago, or not, elementary ed, education. I wanted to do, be an elementary ed education teacher, but I joined the military instead. So I spent my five years in college in Iraq. I don't have a education like you guys do, but what I do know is for the last five months or whatever, up until July twenty eighth, I was in charge of all the state-run testing facilities in the state, run by AIMA, and I reported directly to AIMA director and to this, the governor and his office. What I do know is around the first week of July, our, our positive cases were at the highest point and they peaked and they started going down at that point. Kane County, McHenry County were never extremely high. We base all of our resources and all of our data off of Cook County in the Chicago School District, which has millions more people than we do in this little tiny community. We have the resources to make this a safe environment for our kids. There's no reason why there are schools, there's no reason why there are schools in our district, public, private schools, that can be open for our kids to go. Preschools where kids pick their nose and, and don't know how to wipe their own butts. But yet, they can be in class and get the extra, uh, time in there. But my fourth grader, who is a very good student, is having issues. My first grader, you know, I'm doing first grade all over again. I'm a single dad. I work forty hours a week. I don't have time to do first, first grade all over again. My first grader can't read. So how's he get through most of his classes? If it's not someone sitting right next to a first grader or kindergarten, even some second graders or special ed kids, they cannot do these classes without someone there. There's a reason why in special ed, they usually get assigned a person with them in classes. There's a reason why almost every preschooler, every preschool in this area or every kindergarten in this area has multiple teachers in the classroom. But yet, us as parents, a single parent or a parent that stays at home alone, we have to figure it out by ourselves and do it for multiple students. It's not fair. I will say this and I'll just close off on this. I know there are some people that are coming up for reelection. I may not have a voice here right now, but I will when it comes time to vote. And I promise you this, to that come election time, if we're not in school by then, then I will do my damnedest to make sure that we will have a new board and there will be some people getting fired. Because this is ridiculous. It's frustrating for me. I can't do it. I can't do it myself. And yet, you are telling me to do it and you're telling me to pay to do it. I'm paying my frickin' taxes. I apologize for my language. I'm paying a school registration fee so that I can teach my damn kids how to do, do their classes. It's not fair.
Okay. I want to thank everybody very much for taking the time and effort to come and express their concerns. Excuse me, yes.
Homes are supposed to be their comfort spot. You've taken that away from them. We're supposed to be able to be their parents. When they're, when they get frustrated, they need to be able to come to us. And now we have to be their teachers and we're not supposed to be their safety stay more. That's absolute BS. We're their parents first. Let us be their parents and their parents only. That is it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. So again, thank you all very much for taking the time to express your, uh, that your voices be heard and your concerns be heard. Um, we'll move to, uh, item six, which is revision and adoption of the agenda. Um, go through the agenda here. Mr. Lombard, do you have anything to, um, just click it.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Altmeier, do you have anything to say?
No.
Uh, that's who's there?
No.
Nothing further. Something on here, uh, is that your, uh, like a seal?
No.
Nothing? Um. Okay. So I'll make the motion to adopt the agenda with, uh, the deletion of item seven, the deletion of item nine, deletion of item ten, and the deletion of item twelve. And, and seventeen. He doesn't have anything? All right. Do you have a second? Second from Mrs. Mayorino. Um, always, uh, always in favor of this. Yeah. All right. Hold. Okay, that passes. Um, so we'll move on to item eight. Just click it.
Thank you. You'll see that you have in front of you just a quick update on ESSA and our assessment landscape for this year. Um, although it's an extraordinary year, we still are following that school report card timeline. And so I just wanted to give the board a little bit of a preview. Um, it's going to look a little bit different this year. So essentially, because of the pandemic and the emergency shutdown, the state has, you'll see in the bottom of the, um, update, the state has essentially deleted all of the assessment data because we, they weren't able to collect it. So the SAT, the Illinois Assessment of Readiness, formerly the PARC test, the DLM for our, uh, students with IEPs, the science assessment, simply were not collected. So the state will not be including those. They will not be including growth metrics nor will they be including information on the achievement gap because the assessment measures were not given in schools due to the shutdown. So the state will still be issuing, um, a school report card towards the end of October, just as they always do, the similar timeline. Um, we've been monitoring the data in the state system, making some corrections. Um, what two big takeaways that I just want to flag for the board? The first is that the state will be still issuing a summative designation. As you recall, last year, we had two schools with exemplary status and the rest of our schools were in commendable status, which we were very, very proud of. The summative designations will remain the same for this year. So essentially, they're not going to take a year off from issuing them, but they will be carrying the ones from the prior year forward. Uh, and we are looking forward to actually getting assessment data this year and moving forward that way, uh, to be able to get a, a report card with that, those true metrics next year. The other piece, and this is a, a legislative piece, is that the U.S. Department of Education has indicated that the states will not have available a waiver for any state or mandated, um, assessments this year. So last year, the reason why the state of Illinois could decide not to give the IAR or the SAT or the Illinois Science Assessment is because the U.S. Department of Education offered that waiver. They have already stated they will not be offering that to states again. So the state of Illinois will be, at this time, the information we have is that the state of Illinois will be requiring those assessments. Um, and so we anticipate having that data for next year and hopefully back to normal with our school report card at that time. With that, I can take any questions. It's just a quick update. We'll be bringing you more information, uh, as it becomes available, uh, into October, which is our school report card month.
Question, the topic? What's your? Eleven.
Thank you very much. A, a brief update this evening. Each time this year, um, we present to the board the current standing in terms of, uh, student enrollment numbers based on the first six days of school. Um, this year, much like last year, our numbers are actually declining a little bit. I'm not a surprise to us. We saw this coming a little bit. Our class sizes have been going down, um, at the kindergarten level for, for a handful of years. And that trend has continued. Um, you see in, in your packet there at your place, um, the first page of, of tables is a, a school by school, grade by grade breakdown of the six-day enrollment for this year compared to the six-day enrollment numbers from last year. And you'll see basically every overall grade level has actually dropped just a little bit. Um, with a couple exceptions, mostly at high school because those are where very large class, class counts are at still. Um, but overall, the trend is, is a, a, kind of a, a decrease in, in overall enrollment numbers. And you'll see in the second page of that is a, a kind of an overall building by building, um, comparison of those same numbers, showing a total enrollment, six-day enrollment for this year of eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-four students, which is down from nine thousand one hundred and fifty-eight last year. That's a decrease of three hundred and thirty-four students, which is a lot. Um, but if you think about the graduating classroom last year, about seven hundred and forty, and the new kindergarten class this year of five hundred and sixteen, that's a difference of two hundred and twenty-five based just on those students who've left the district graduating and those students coming into the district in kindergarten to offset those. So that offsets all but a hundred and ten of that difference. Um, it's, it's largely the difference between, um, the large enrollment years that we've had, um, those ten, twelve, thirteen years ago, and the, the, the smaller numbers that we're seeing, um, in more recent years. Based on those trends, it, it looks as though if, if the status quo maintains, if we were to keep these same five hundred and sixteen kindergarten enrollments over the course of the next eight years, our enrollments would actually go down almost two thousand more students. Do we expect that to happen? No, not exactly. There's a couple of construction projects happening around the community that we're watching. Um, Talamoor's building again. There's a Terrace Hill, you know, Terrace Hill development that's, that's starting to take shape as well. So, um, we keep a close eye on those sorts of things as well to help project our numbers going forward. Do we anticipate these same sorts of, of decreases? It's possible. Um, what we're hearing and what we're thinking is that we might actually see more of a leveling off. We have a couple of different models by which we predict and try to show trends in this data. Um, one model being very linear, and it takes these numbers, puts them in compared to, to numbers throughout six-day enrollments from previous years and just projects that straight out. Those projections would actually have our numbers dropping a little bit more quickly than we've seen in the past and probably more quickly than would happen in the future. So while we have that tool, we also update other tools that along the way, um, with real-time enrollment data because these numbers do fluctuate throughout the school year. This is just one snapshot in time. And a perfect example of that is actually the preschool program, uh, which starts six-day enrollment here at a hundred and eighty-one students. That program is usually around three hundred and twenty by the end of the school year. So that just kind of gives you an idea of how, how that particular program has a pretty big impact on, on overall enrollment as the school year goes on. And it's a, a similar but smaller impact than other grade levels. So it's kind of a picture at, at, a, a picture in time of enrollments in District 158. And do you have to answer any questions? Do you have any?
Thank you for the report. Any questions regarding the report? Um, I mean, I think, you know, we've seen our projections before and we're, you know, fairly happy with where, uh, our class sizes, uh, was projected to be at the, uh, eight through five. Um, we realize that, uh, um, at, at some middle school levels, it's, it's not bad, but it's just some things that are pushing, um, pushing it a little bit, but, you know, there's, there's a one-year anomaly that we try to get, get through. And so we'll be through with them, um, pretty much that way. And, uh, I think we're, we're situated, in general, currently, we're situated pretty well. Obviously, we already space classrooms. In fact, it's, you know, afford us an opportunity in the environment we're going to be in where we, we ultimately get to some in-person, uh, classrooms to be able to keep our numbers down in those classrooms because of the, uh, classrooms we have available, um, to be able to do it. So, um, I don't know. Anybody else have any comments concerning the report? Okay. Um, move on to item, um, thirteen, which is president's report. I don't, I don't have anything of major significance other than just a real quick, uh, comment concerning our, our public comments and, and concerns, um, there. Uh, I think one of the, the things you, you know, I want to make clear is that, uh, the board absolutely hears the public. We're very much aware that a majority, the predominance of, of this community would like to be back in person. I'm pretty certain most everybody on the board thinks that that's what's best, which is, that the administration thinks that's what's best, which is, we all understand that. Um, and that, that we all have a, you know, a common interest in. Um, it's, it's how to get there in, in this current environment. Um, and I think the piece that, and it seems to me that, that from the speakers today, um, they're all not understanding what changed, um, from the time when we, it started with the idea of being back in school and, and we had this plan. Um, and, and the biggest factor, you know, again, it's, it's not as simple as us just making decisions and saying, yes, you know, there's, there's another element and that's, uh, our, our staff. That's a big part of that. We cannot compel staff members to come in and work if they're not comfortable. And as a group, what's changed is, uh, from the time we put together that initial plan, their level of comfort in regards to what was going on in the county, in the area, um, concerning, um, rising cases. At that time when we were planning, uh, they were no longer comfortable. And that's probably the biggest factor that played in, into, uh, the decision-making. So if anybody's, uh, wondering how, you know, like I said, it seemed like it was a great mystery to people. It's, uh, we took an about face. Uh, the about, the about face was, uh, we, we got some strong feedback from our, uh, from our, our, our two unions that, uh, represent our, our, uh, employees that, uh, they, they weren't on board yet in the current environment. It's as simple as that. Um, you can't conduct school in person without teachers, enough teachers willing to come in and teach those classes. So, uh, you can't be any more, you know, direct. And that regards, uh, uh, to that. So we're not deaf, um, to the, uh, to the community. We, we absolutely understand. We, we concur, um, it's just a matter of, of how do you get to that point? And then we're not, we weren't at that point at the start of school. So we'll leave it at that. Um, item fourteen is superintendent's report. I don't know if you have anything, um, beyond, I know you got a, a report to give, um, in a second. Well, it's part of your report, I'm sorry.
It is. And, and the only thing that I would add would be, um, and it's, you know, unfortunately it wasn't, it's, it's not a black and white metric. And I, you know, I respect, um, you know, Mrs. Wiley's comments about wishing that there were black and white metrics that we could have, have relied upon. Um, and that is a major, major component of tonight's report is, is I do have those metrics. And, and fortunately that's a, a huge component as to why we're heading in the direction that we are heading in now as McKinney County, um, is a very different county than, than Cook County and then even Kane County in terms of, um, the preparedness of our, of our county health department. And that's not a, um, negative comments toward our health department. It's just a reality. Um, and now they're nearing the point where they're ready to support us. Um, but a part of that, another caveat that is not as black and white as the metrics that I wish that, that they were black and white is the, the fact that the guidelines that the Illinois Department of Public Health were expecting us to follow were changing on nearly a daily basis. And we just didn't, you know, we didn't feel confident that we were going to be able to live by those guidelines and keep our kids and teachers safe. And, and that's not black and white, and I understand that, but that, that's, that is also the reality. And that's, that's a feeling of our level of confidence that we can keep our community's children and our staff members safe in the workplace. And that, that's, um, that, that's a ma, that was a major component to the decision as well. But the good news is, is we've come a long way since then. Um, and I think we have a very positive outlook on where we're headed as well as some black and white features that, uh, we're excited to share. Um, and with that, I'd like to head down the path of, of sharing what, um, the first step in our risk, return to school update would be. Mr. Troy?
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Sure.
But just now you mentioned the support from the county health department. What does that support entail to, for specifics reasons?
Sure. Uh, I'll probably reference it a little bit in here, but I, I can definitely address it now. So, um, on a weekly basis, uh, Mrs. Lombard, um, and, and our, and a couple of our nurses are on a, a conference call with the county health department as well as representatives from every school district around the county. And on those calls, they are discussing things such as contact tracing, um, such as the PPE procurement, such as just processes within the, the schools. Um, and you'll remember that PP, or that, uh, contact tracing was one of my main concerns in our ability, um, to handle and manage the domino effect of if a student or a staff member contracted COVID nineteen and you were within six feet, what is the domino effect and how do we track that? And do we have the, the appropriate manpower? What I learned, and now let me take a step back. Since then, in, in recent weeks, in the last five or six weeks, the county health department has now elevated their level of support. And there is a superintendent, um, superintendent call with, uh, the leadership of the county, um, Peter Austin, as well as the IMEA director, David Christensen, and, um, and leadership in the county health department and their epidemiologist. Um, where we're discussing this actual return to school and what those processes need to be and, uh, what they can do to support us in our decision-making. So, um, what I learned on these calls have been that the gold standard for contact tracing is actually thirty employees specifically dedicated to contact tracing for every one hundred thousand citizens. So if you break that down to who we are as a school district, that's approximately three employees completely dedicated if we were all here every single day. So what that did for me was that information was not readily available. And I attribute that to just evolving information and evolving knowledge of how to handle a pandemic that none of us have ever lived through. Um, so knowing that, that three dedicated employees to manage our school district in terms of the contact tracing would meet that, that gold standard, if you will. And I'll, all of our nursing team who have been, I can't speak highly enough about how they've conducted themselves and led us through this from a health standpoint, they've been absolute rock stars. Um, but the, the, the cases that we've had internally, uh, with staff and, and the, the contact tracing that they've had to conduct, um, they've been fantastic. But based on the employees we have in the buildings now and what I'll present here in the first few steps that we're ready to take, we have ample staff to manage that contact tracing. So having that information and understanding of what we need just to support ourselves as well as their level of support is a new layer of support that we just didn't have. Um, another example, they, uh, I would, they shared with, with me last week that they were still two to three weeks away from having the proper level of staffing in the county health department, um, from being able to support the county, um, if we were all back in a hybrid setting. Well, that's very concerning. Is our first phone call with, we have a, a suspected case by our protocols that IDPH has given us is to the county health department for guidance. We have a suspected case. This is what we have done. Now they walk us through the next steps and help us determine by making a recommendation, do we, do we quarantine this individual or series of individuals? Do we shut down the, do they recommend we close the, just the classroom? Do they recommend we close an entire school? Um, and it's concerning to me that they may not have the, the, the capacity in, in the county level to support all school districts in the county if we were back in hybrid. Now currently, as one of the commoners said, the three small districts in Marengo are the only districts in the entire county that are in session. And, you know, I can tell you that, that the level of support that they're receiving, if we were in session, I would be concerned right now. But I'm, I have, I'm, I'm very optimistic that with the additional staff members that they're telling us that are less than two weeks away now of, of, of bringing on, that their, their staffing levels are going to be ready to manage us whenever we return based on the dates that I'm going to share with you. And then, but what that does tell me is they're also not ready to support the entire county if we were all back in session in a traditional school setting. So I think that's also information that we just did not have in July. The county health department was not in a place where they could tell us, yes, we think you need to be remote. We think you need to be operating in a hybrid fashion. We think you need to be in person. Um, in fact, they, they were struggling to manage the, the community crisis before they could even consider the schools, which is understandable. They haven't managed a, a pandemic either. Um, but when you rely on, you, you think to the fact that, I mean, we're educators. We're not epidemiologists. We're not infectious disease experts, and yet we're being asked to do this. And so we have to rely on the experts for those decisions. So that level of support has increased dramatically. Um, you know, I, I called Melissa, Melissa, um, Adamson today and, and thanked her and, and showed appreciation for the, the level of dedication that she's, uh, offered to the county and the growth that we've seen in the last several weeks. Um, they've been extremely supportive of us. Um, and I'm very hopeful that, that that's going to continue and they're going to be in a place where they can really support us moving forward because, to be honest, all three school districts in Marengo is almost the size of Chesapeake. And we have eight other schools that are just the same size as Chesapeake. So that, it's concerning to me that, that we may be in a position where we, just our school district could overrun the health department, and we don't want to do that because we need their support and so we can properly support our children. So, um, hope that that answers your question.
No, I just want to say thanks. I, I didn't mean to interrupt your mojo on, you know, on the presentation, but I, I thought that those details are important to, to bring forward for some of the reasons that were presented and, and what we saw or heard in the public comments.
No, I, I completely agree. I hope I just don't repeat myself whenever I go through.
No, thank you. It, it, it's okay even if you do.
Sure. No problem. All right. So, so to start by give, by offering just a little bit of background. Um, so the district has been in remote learning for almost a month. Um, you know, by and large, there are a lot of high quality learning has occurred and it's a testament to our staff members and to our families. Now, I'm not going to pretend to say that it's been perfect. You've heard for some examples tonight where families have struggled and that's very real. Um, but what I can tell you is based on what I'm, what I've seen with my colleagues around the state, um, and, and so many districts that are in the exact same situation that we are. Um, and a lot of, and the majority of, I mean, the majority of Northern Illinois school districts are. Um, the quality of instruction and the structure that is happening in our school district, it really is outstanding. Now, it does not replace in-person learning, and I don't believe that it does. But given the circumstances where we are, I am very proud of our teachers and I'm very proud of our, of our, of our parents and what's happening. Again, I know it's not ideal. There's so many other things that, that I wish we could be doing. We all would prefer to be in session. I can't be, I can't say that clearer enough. We all would prefer to be in session. It has been a shot of energy for us this week to, to welcome back our self-contained students in special education and to, and to, to see them back in the building. And that's a tremendous first step down a path, uh, and I'm very excited to share what that, uh, those next few steps are. So October sixteenth was the, uh, the target date that I shared with you where we were going to revisit the model back in, uh, in, in early August. Um, we've been working through that gradual, the gradual approach to in-person learning. And I really want to accentuate that component, that, that gradual approach. And while I know that, that, you know, probably won't be a, a popular approach, we have to be strategic about how we do this. Because if, if our goal is to ultimately return to in-person learning, if we do so too fast and we don't take into account, um, the risks that exist and the very real risks that exist in terms of positive cases that exist in our, with our student population and our staff that we know are for sure one hundred percent there. And an outbreak occurs, our community is at risk. And that's, you know, whether, that's just not a risk that, that I feel comfortable taking. Um, so we have to be strategic about this so that way we can move forward and we don't ever have to go back. Cause our goal is definitely to take steps forward towards a full return without having to go back to another remote, completely remote session where not only are we working how we have been most recently, but how we did in the spring where we had to be all working from home. That is definitely not our goal. Um, as I said, students have been, have begun returning to school, our special education students, our tier three students. It's gone extremely smoothly. Uh, huge, um, you know, thank you to our, you know, transportation for, uh, how, how smoothly that has gone. Ms. Lombard and, and Ms. Hooper and, and her team. Um, next steps are targeting our pre-K through five students, uh, and coming back into a hybrid model. Our goal, um, and in tonight's presentation is, is focused almost solely on pre-K through fifth grade to get our youngest students back into school first. Um, it's, our community has, has shared with us very regularly that our youngest students have struggled, uh, the most with, with remote learning. I mean, you heard tonight, some of the, the examples from some of our families and, and the, the prominent examples were about the youngest students not being able to stay engaged online. And we recognize that that is a very real problem and we want to solve that. Um, but there are also some, some, some trends that were emerging in the feedback that we've been receiving from families, um, about remote learning and the structure of remote learning for those who opt, who are going to opt to stay remote or for those on the days that they are remote to improve that setting as well. Because there are some improvements that we can make, um, that should be made at the same time. So we're not making too many changes and, and continue tweaking with people's schedules. Um, then again, while, as I said before, the gradual return, uh, is, is really a necessity. So what we've learned thus far, um, as I said already, returning to in-person is definitely our, our preference. Um, you know, and, and it's been, you know, it's been, it's been said, it's been insinuated. And I, I want to say very clearly that, that no actions by the school district are, are, are political in any way. Our behaviors are one hundred percent. Our goal is in line with IDPH guidelines. We want a safe environment for our students. We want a safe environment for our staff. And ultimately, uh, we believe that that, that results in a safe environment for our entire community. Because what our students bring in is our community, what our students go home to, um, returns to our community. And we want to just ensure that, uh, that our community remains safe. Um, and, you know, as some of our, our guests shared tonight, the trends are, the, the, the numbers are looking pretty good and we're heading in a very positive direction. And we don't want to contribute to that going in the opposite direction uh, because we've either gone too fast or, uh, we've not adhered to the guidelines that we've been tasked with following. I said before that the Illinois Department of Public Health guidelines and the, and their instability and the changing, uh, nature of those guidelines were a major contributing factor to our wavering from our original plan. Uh, fortunately they have stabilized, um, and, and we're very, very pleased with that because we've been able to, um, to tighten our procedures, um, to a point where our chief safety and security officer, Mr. Dean, uh, and I both feel very confident that we are, uh, we're in a place where we're ready to bring students back and excited. Um, statewide public health infrastructure, this is where I, I mentioned before at the beginning, the, the MCDH, the support is, is dramatically improving. Contact tracing processes, those implications have been clarified as I also alluded to before. And safety protocols have been tightened throughout our buildings. Countywide metrics in support of uniform decision-making is forming. I'm going to spend a little bit of time on this tonight. Um, it's very, very new. Um, in fact, what I'm going to share with you tonight is only, uh, released in draft form. Um, it has not been formally released to the public. Uh, the county health department gave, gave us, gave school districts the permission to share as long as we acknowledged it was in draft form and it's could still change. It does not have numbers attached to it. It is only a process for, for how their recommendation process will work from shifting from completely remote to hybrid learning to in-person learning, um, as well as other, uh, contributing factors to that decision-making. And then new considerations continue to crop up daily, um, as we are continuing throughout this new territory. And I, and I also want to emphasize, I mean, this, this is a pandemic that none of us have ever lived through. Um, you know, we're doing the very best that we can. Our, you know, our goal is not to alienate anyone in the community or make anyone feel devalued or that their voice doesn't matter. We, our goal is a hundred percent about keeping everyone safe and, and, you know, serving the community the best that we can, uh, with education. And ultimately, we definitely do want to return to school and hopefully this is a, a good positive step in that direction and we can build some momentum, um, and, and, and come back smoothly. So some of the metrics that I alluded to before, um, these metrics were pulled as of this morning on the, on the series of websites that I, uh, that we have access to through the, the Illinois Department of Public Health, through the county health department, um, as well as Northwestern Medicine that I'll go through. So these are very up-to-date, um, statistics today just to give you all a snapshot as to where we stand right at this moment. So the chart that's on the screen, uh, right now is the Illinois Department of Public Health Region Nine Dashboard. So Region Nine is McKinney and, and Lake Counties. Um, and so currently as a region, we sit at a positivity rate of six point two. I'm going to talk a little bit about positivity rate in just a few minutes. Um, but I, I just wanted to paint the picture because that positivity rate is the most common, um, the, the most common statistic that has been shared, uh, whether it be CDC or, um, or IDPH. The epidemiologist in the McKinney County Department of Public Health has been, has been urging us to move away from positivity rate because of the, um, the, the inflation of the number or the instability of that number because of the, uh, the number of tests that could be given, the populations, um, instability and the differences that really we get to see because of the difference in population that exists in Lake and McKinney Counties. Um, because the six point two is actually pretty inflated because McKinney County is lower than that number and we're suffering because of Lake County on this one example. He's actually encouraging us to use the incidence, incidence rate, which I'll explain in later slides. Um, this metric is the McKinney County Dashboard, the positivity rate on McKinney County. Um, back on September seventh, we were growing very concerned. Were we heading, as, as we were laying these plans out, um, eyeing this board meeting for, for presentation, um, were we, were we going to be facing government restrictions on, uh, actually the governor placing some tighter restrictions on us? But fortunately, we learned that that, that bubble, that, that increase was actually an example that I, that I shared earlier of the county health. earlier of the county health department being a little bit overloaded and understaffed. It was a backlog of, of tests that they had not added into the system. So, they add into the system that caused a blip, and then as they've gotten caught up, the rate has, has stabilized. So, as of September 13th of this week, we, McHenry County stands at a 4.9% positivity rate. So, this table comes from the North, a Northwestern search database that Northwestern has built for the entire state based on ZIP codes. Because relying on our county data, you know, Huntley is, is a, is a very different community than Richmond or Johnsburg. We, we, in terms of population, in terms of everything. Richmond recently experienced a, for the county, a sizable outbreak that they, that they experienced. We have not had something like that. We, you know, Dr. Nathan over at, at Northwestern Huntley believed we were on the path to one just after the 4th of July, but fortunately that, that stabilized. But this, I searched and created the, created this table with the three main ZIP codes that, that populated our school district. So, 60142, which is Huntley, 60156, Lake in the Hills, and 60102, which is Algonquin. And it should be noted that portions of Lake in the Hills and portions of Algonquin obviously do not go to our school district, so there's no way of specifically segmenting those portions of the population off. But what's important that you can see is you can see a stabilizing, stabilization of that positivity rate, and, as well as that, the bottom one, the weekly new case rate per 100,000 population has been steadily declining. And on this second page here is that, is that weekly cases per 100,000 all by itself. Okay? This, this mirrors, this is, is very similar to that incident, incident rate, which is basically the, the number of positive cases per 100,000 residents. And that is what the epidemiologist at, in the McHenry County Department of Public Health is urging us to pay the closest attention to in terms of using, for making decisions. So, this next slide is actually the, the metric for the McHenry County School Decision-Making Tool. And this is, again, in draft form. And there are four levels to this tool. At your, at your place, I placed a packet of the entire draft of that metric. It has an explanation of each of those for you to read in greater detail. But to explain this, these four different categories, places that, the incident rate, that if, if we were greater than 14 per 100,000, or the positivity per day, that we should be in virtual. Okay? Between 7 and 14 per 100,000, the county health department is recommending that we, that hybrid is the appropriate place in this one single category. Okay? And if, and then less than 7, we might be, we should be considering a full in-person. I can tell you that I ran the statistics on our three ZIP codes, and we're at 11.4 this week, earlier this week. So, right in the middle of, of hybrid. Now, test positivity, you can see there, greater than 8%, we should be at virtual. Obviously, that's the same red line that IDPH is saying, which is the red line where the governor may, may add on additional restrictions for our region. Between 5 and 8% of the positivity rate is, is where hybrid could be considered. And then less than 5 is where we may consider in-person. The test positivity rate was an area, although I, the epidemiologist urged us that we should kind of steer away from this in terms of our decision-making. I said earlier, we advocated that this be included, at least as a portion of, of the metric, because it is what IDPH and the CDC uses and is one of the more common metrics that, that people recognize and understand. And we wanted to be sure that it was a tool that anyone could look at and kind of understand where we stand and where they're recommending that we are at the time. Okay? The next section is the COVID-like illness hospital admissions. And again, please bear with me. This is a, a brand-new metric that I'm still learning myself. But the COVID-like illness hospital admissions, so we're looking at measuring using the Illinois, the surveillance system, the, the number of hospital admissions for all individuals, looking at an average of hospital admissions over the last seven days. So, is it stable or decreasing, meaning the number of days without hospital admission is greater than, than, greater than or equal to 7? Okay? So, we, we should be, if it's, if hospital admission is, is decreasing, we should remain virtual. If it's increasing with hospital admission is, increases to greater than 7, then we can move down, down the metric. And then the final category is the weekly count of new cases is increasing for children between the ages of 3 and 18. We felt that it was important to have a child po, you know, child positivity in testing as a part of our, our metrics that we're using to consider. And again, is, is it stable or decreasing in order, is it, or is it, is it increasing in terms of moving? So, the cases increases for all cases is less than 10% for two consecutive weeks, and the case increase for youth between 3 to 18 is less than 10% for two consecutive weeks in order to move. And that, that would make it stable or decreasing. Okay? If it's increasing, the increase is greater than 10% for two consecutive weeks, and then for 3 to 18, it's incre, it's greater than 10% for the two consecutive weeks. The two consecutive weeks is a, is a continual theme that you will hear when using this metric, because they believe that, that we need to be focusing on trends, not a spike. So, any single-day spike, you almost, it's, it's almost like analyzing quantitative data. You throw it out the window as an anomaly, and you want to look at, at long-term trends. So, when, when evaluating this, we need to be, are we in all four of these categories in terms of moving over to the next, to the next, to the next phase? And currently, we are in all four of those categories, and the county health department is recommending that we have their, their recommendation to move to a hybrid model. Because we, we are satisfactorily living within all four of those categories based on the metrics that I just outlined, very roughly. Apologies, because like I said, it's a, it's a new model here. In order for us to move again, you must live within this new phase for a minimum of two weeks before considering to move, because you need to continually evaluate that data. And you need to have two categories in order to move backwards. So, if, if our positivity rate and the incidence rate spikes for a period of time for seven, seven out of, out of 10 days, then that's when they, they would recommend us move backwards into virtual. So, just because we get a positivity rate on one-day spikes, we, it may be one of those cases where they are backlogging a, a number of cases that they're putting into the system again. We take that, that number, kind of throw it out, but we look at a, a 7 out of 10 days, are we seeing these increases to make steady decisions over a period of time before we actually make a move. And a two-week period of time living within that, within that new system is, is required. So, I feel really good about the fact that the health department has made a formal recommendation that we move to hybrid to offer, to make our formal move, and, and then explain what our hybrid model would look like, and share the date of October 19th, being when we would be welcoming our early childhood through fifth grade back into our schools in a hybrid model. And if there are no questions about the metrics, it seems like a, like a natural stopping point. If you do have some questions about this before we lose it, I'll do my best to answer them, or I can go in and explain the model and what that will look like.
I mean, the only question I'd have is, are you aware of other school districts using other metrics beyond this? I know they're using them for their own locality.
I am, I am aware of other school districts using other metrics beyond this, but the, the county health department, the entire county, McHenry County is going to use this metric. And all of Lake County is going to use a metric very similar. I'm not sure, the, the test positivity rate was one of our asks. I'm not sure if Lake County adopted that, but they're using the same metric, and they felt it was very important that we use a similar metric for our entire region. I can tell you that, you know, Barrington 220 has been a district that I've collaborated with pretty regularly. And, you know, Dr. Harris presented earlier in the week, and the metrics that he was sharing were different. In fact, some of their metrics had to do with something similar in terms of metrics in a sliding scale, but they also referenced PPE supplies, and they referenced staff attendance rates, which we've looked at, and we, we of course monitor, but we have not included in our decision-making model in terms of if our staff attendance rates dip below a certain point, it's going to trigger that, that we, you know, we shift backwards. We, we decided that that would be kind of made on, we just continually monitor that, and if it became a problem, then we handle it accordingly. So, the rates that, the rates that they were using, I think was referencing below 80%. We have to be in, in virtual. 80 to 90 is, is remote, but teaching from school, 90 and above is hybrid, and 95 and above is full in-person, because that's normal. So, that references the point that you made earlier about you have to have a
You have to have people to teach.
Confident staff in order to be able to teach kids.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's, nothing happens without, without.
Right. Those are the only real differences that I've seen. I'm sure some of the other districts in maybe, maybe Kane or DuPage may have something a little different. DuPage County's health department is, is a completely different animal than McHenry County's.
Yeah.
They're also much larger.
All right.
I don't know if you want to go to the draft. I want to finalize, do something. I have a question from the public. Is something that you can share, you know, kind of like that, or something like that, with the county standards, is where this is at?
Absolutely. That's a, that's a good question. The county, the county, Pete Austin, the, the county administrator, shared that they, they intend to send a press release to, to all of us to kind of contribute to, and, and are looking to do a joint press release on the work that we've done in the very near future to make this formal and, and public. And then this, they intend to have this updated on the county's website on a weekly basis. So, of course, we could link from our website directly to that so that our families could, could access it very, very easily. Now, it'll be county data, but, you know, we, it's pretty easily adaptable. And like I said, I, it took me about three minutes to figure out our incident report, because it was just your popular, you know, the number of positive cases, I think number of positive cases divided by the total population times 100,000. So, if the population is accurate from what Google told me.
Right. And just, just revisiting, I mean, the, when we finally made the decision how we were going to go about starting school, I mean, it was, it was clear at that point that it was in mid-October that, that would be pretty much the earliest we would be back in school.
We shared our plan. Our reevaluation date was going to be October 16th.
Right. Correct. So, you know, the concerns that were expressed regarding having metrics and stuff out there, I mean, it, it wasn't like we were trying to hide it. We just, it was premature in, in regards to, I mean, we're still a month away from that time. We're, we're, we're starting, you know, building all that stuff to do it. I, I know people want to know information sooner than later, but, I mean, we just weren't at that point yet.
I think, I mean, total transparency, I think people felt as if they, they had bought into our in-person plan, and a number of, you know, they felt that they were, you know, blindsided by our about-face.
Yeah.
And had a hard, have a hard time wrapping their head around the fact that
They had a choice, and now they didn't have a choice.
Right. And I, and I understand that.
Yeah, no, I agree.
I totally understand that.
Yep.
And it's hard to, to make the, to make the, the very gray aspects of the state, that those guidelines were changing like every other day, and we just didn't feel confident that we could meet them to keep everyone safe. It's, it's not black and white, and I, and I understand that. It's, it's hard to, to get people to understand that there's no metric that can show that. And, and we, you know, we worked tirelessly all summer long in terms of trying to, to catch a moving target. And we just got to a point where, you know, we didn't feel like we were going to meet it. And as you said, our, you know, our teachers were, were uncomfortable with
Well, they're uncomfortable, and it's
The fact that we couldn't hammer it down, that this is, we can meet this, and they didn't, they saw the moving target as well.
It's not to throw them under the bus either.
No, not at all.
I mean, the, the, the numbers were moving in the wrong direction out of, you know, and they started to move in the wrong direction pretty quickly. And, and it's, again, it's, you know, a lot of this is, you know, people, you know, and their actions have consequences. And again, there's, there's a reason why there was a, an increase, because people started becoming more in contact with each other, okay? And they grew lax across the summer. So, you know, we all want schools to be back together, you know, sooner than later in person. People, the whole community needs to be responsible for their actions in, in getting this under control so that we can do, get to this point. And so, we need everybody to be responsible, not just a part of the community. We need the whole community to be responsible and, and help drive these numbers down and get us in these metrics that we can be back in school safely. So...
And, I mean, I go back to kind of a point that I was making earlier. Had we had this type of a, of a metric system from the experts at the county health department in July,
Yeah, we wouldn't have been
The conversation may be totally different. It may be completely different. And we would have had not only a recommendation, but a tool that we could have made a decision on. We now have, the, the experts are just able to give it to us now, the, what, the third week in September. And, and fortunately, now we have this to, to use to move, to move forward. And I think it's, it's a really big deal, because we have, we have that cold hard data that we can use to support our decision-making. Now, is this the only piece that supports our decision? In the next slide, I'll go into some details as to what other factors contribute to how that decision is made, to hopefully make that a little bit more clear. Because no, it's not the only factor, because we can't have, one of my concerns with this is I don't want people to believe that just because a number says this, that automatically we're shifting, because there are some contributing factors. And on the next slide, I want to, I'll go into those details to be sure that's totally clear. Because there's still some gray aspects, because we're people and humans. There, there's gray aspects to how humans function, but, but you're right. You're, now that we have a target that we can watch and we can see the numbers moving, we have to be very, very cognizant of how we're contributing to those numbers. Because as we, if we all work together as, as a community and keep driving them down, then that green column is where we'll get to live soon enough.
So, yeah, keep, any other questions?
So, these are county metrics, correct?
Correct.
Is there any way for us to drill down to those three ZIP codes or the three towns that you mentioned? I would like to see those metrics on our dashboard, on our website, daily. It's not that hard.
Daily may be hard, but
Maybe
Weekly can probably occur.
Okay, weekly. Yeah, I would very much like to see that just for our three ZIP codes.
Yeah, I mean, it's good. It gives you an idea whether we're mirroring the rest of the county or not. I mean, we might mirror it in the wrong direction.
Right, but we might mirror it in, in the positive, which would enable us to perhaps move to the next level quicker than, you know, Woodstock.
And we don't have to, I mean, we're not handcuffed to other county, other communities to move when they move. And we, you know, we don't have to move at the same rate as, you know, as Harrison does. I mean, you know, or, or McHenry. You know, there, we work with the health department as Huntley 158. So, but it's county data, but we can look at, we can definitely pull our own, our own community data.
I would like to see that on the dashboard.
And like I said, that, that Northwestern site is, was a, you know, was a godsend to be able to get that. You know, Mr. Dean shared that with me, and that's what I've recently learned, is, is all of the superintendents in, in Northern Illinois have recently found that and has been a huge help. And we're trying to share that around as fast as we possibly can, because it's, it's good information to have. So, if, if others are interested in, in that, we can probably even make, put a link to that, to that tool on our website, because community members may be interested just in kind of seeing what's going on there too, because it's, it's a really good site.
Yeah.
And that's been one of the biggest challenges
Yeah.
With the whole
Is common, is everyday people don't have access to reliable data.
Right.
What's it believed?
Right.
You know, one channel sees this, and others see this. This is like the first concrete thing. Like, I think it's a critical thing to start. So, I think it's also very helpful for people who are thinking like, we're making willing decisions based on that.
Right. That way they can see the science and, and they can follow the logic along with this. The more information we can give our community, the better off it's going to be.
Dr. Rowe?
Yes, ma'am.
What about drilling down even further and putting on our website the specific schools so that parents are, you know, transparently aware and can outweigh the, the risks? Not just at county level, but, you know, the GEE has, without a HIPAA violation, you don't have to give, you know, gender or, but just staff versus
To be totally transparent with you, I'm concerned about, about the stigma of, of COVID for, for children and honestly, staff too. Not that we want to hide information, that's not our goal, but I don't know. Ms. Lombard, you're closer to this than I. If you, I know you've been with the nurses and had conversations, so if you, you know, feel free to chime in.
Well, I think that's one of the things, I, I know IDPH was at one point looking at putting that on the dashboard for not only schools and businesses and they have not moved to that direction yet. I'm not sure if that decision is still coming or whatnot, but that had been talked about at one point. We, that's one of the, the topics we're going to talk about or bring up either with our nursing subcommittee or part of that operations subcommittee that we do have. One of the pieces about the student data that I think is important to understand is that if people are going to use that as kind of, as a decision-making, we're not fully back in person yet. The only student data that we have is by those people who have called in and talked to our nurses. So that, that might just be, it's, it's data, it's data that we have, but it's data on a very small population. So people are making decisions, looking at a certain school saying, you know, this school has no student cases there. When remember, our kids aren't in yet. We are in, in a, on a small scale there too. And so again, I don't know how we get that information. We ask for it, but again, they, you know, there, it's not being shared on a, on a regular basis. So we do know those numbers, but I, I could not say that those are accurate without our kids being in session yet.
Yeah, and I, I guess, I'm trying to think through the, all of that. And at the end of the day, I mean, if there, anybody's found a, they're not going to be in school, okay? By then, they'll have been out of school and any, all the protocols related to contact tracing will have occurred and so people who need it.
Right, so anyone who was, who was within, within six feet and in that tracing will be directly contacted and they'll know.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of the relevancy of, of what that information would provide somebody, that a occurrence had happened in that school, but it's, it's already had happened, it's not in the school right now. It's, it, right, I mean, you follow what I'm saying? I, I'm trying to figure out if it's relevant data to anybody.
I understand what Melissa's saying. She's, she wants to know, you know, if we know what school it's, as a parent, if, you know, there's an outbreak that we can see on the dashboard that's at Heinemann, if I have a kid at Heinemann, I'm not going to send him there. That's what you're trying to say. So we want to have that information, but my concern is, like Dr. Rowe, Ben, maybe there's a stigma with Heinemann, you know? Don't put a Hein, you know, there's a huge outbreak there and they can't seem to get rid of it. And so now you're pitting them against Marlowe. I, I worry about the stigma of that. But I see what you're saying where as a parent, you want to have that information.
And as a parent, you may say, oh, they've got, you know, two staff members and one student. And you're like, well, that's, that's pretty low.
Yeah.
But then if it keeps growing and that number has increased significantly, then a parent may be like, I'm not feeling really comfortable right now because clearly this is something that is, that is spreading that, you know, that is, is growing within the building and it's just that extra.
So then what data are you giving them? If people are currently out or historically, this is how many people have had it at the building? I mean, it's, I mean, that, that data to me is.
But we do have that database.
We do have that, we do have that data, yeah.
That's a self-reporting.
For staff, it's not self-reporting, but for students, it is self-reporting.
Self-reporting, so.
Right. But even with staff, I'm sure parents would want to know if staff members are, are COVID-positive.
But again, if you're not in contact with that person, you would have been informed if you had been in contact with them as part of the contact tracing process.
Is people might.
So is it relevant information to have? We've had the same debate. It's, it's, it's hard, I, you know.
That's, that's the part I'm, I'm wrestling with going, how, how relevant ultimately is that data then if you haven't, the appropriate people have been contacted, what, so now you put that data out and it spooks somebody that.
Wasn't in contact with that person.
How relevant?
And if, I mean, we've even got, gone so far in our conversations of, you know, if we, as we bring people back, you know, the reality exists that we're going to have quarantines. We're going to have people that have to be out for, for 10 days on isolation or 14 days for quarantine. And then if we're constantly having to, you know, send a notice and you as a parent are getting that notice, you know, once a week or every four or five days, do you, do you become immune or, or hardened to that information? So like I said, we've had the same debate. I don't know that there's a, a right or wrong way of doing it. We're, we've struggled with it too, so.
Mechanic health department is a bit, is there not a, is there?
That has not been a conversation I've had. Has the Health Department taken a stance on that level of communication?
Right now, obviously, it's been more focused on for that contact tracing, if you do have that confirmed positive case on how to communicate and who to communicate that with. And I, and I think those dashboard questions, as we're looking at going back through that return to learn plan and going back to school, I think a lot of the county businesses and schools and everything like that are, are starting to talk about that more. And I think that's a conversation we want to continue. We want full transparency. It's what information and how do we present it so that people can use that information and make decisions? And I, and I think that's, that, that piece that we're still trying to flush out because everybody's right, right? And it's how do we present that so that information, you know, is there? And so I think that's definitely something we'll continue to, to maybe talk a little bit more with the county health department as well as our teams here because we definitely, we want to share, we want to make, give data that is important for people to make those decisions. But then how do you do it so it's relevant to, to be able to get, you know, the information that they do?
You know, prior to our next board meeting, I'll ask the county specifically as well as get legal opinion on, on what's the best course of action and, and share at the October Cal. If that, if that's okay. Perfect.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions about metrics? No, okay. All right, so some of those other factors that I was, that I was referring to that, that are the gray part of the decision-making process, like I said, having this countywide consensus on what constitutes fidelity in terms of guidelines, you know, as, as Mr. Garen mentioned, it's huge. It's, it's extremely meaningful for us and we're really proud and grateful for the, the Health Department for working with us and collaborating on this and inviting us to the table. So, but as I said, there's still some gray aspects to it. There are variations between school districts, like I said, size, facilities and staffing. We've, we've talked about staffing a, a number of different times without, you know, look at the bottom bullet point, without high-functioning, healthy staff, we can't educate your children. And I alluded to that earlier. If, if we lose 20% of our staff to either the illness or an unwillingness to come, we're forced in a direction that we don't want to go. So taking a, a somewhat slow and methodical approach and remaining collaborative is in everyone's best interest. So decisions are always made with student safety and our staff safety is our top priority. That's what I, like, what I alluded to earlier, nothing about this, you know, Mr. Garen also mentioned earlier about where to find reliable news. And it seems that this, this pandemic, everything about it is political. And we as a school district, we don't operate in, in, in political sides in anything that we do. And sometimes it's hard for people to, to, to believe that. And especially when, when Illinois is, is the, the political haven that it, it sometimes is. And, you know, I hope that people can, can just accept, accept my word and, and genuine behaviors behind it, that our, our behaviors are 100% about safety and the well-being of our, our children, staff and community. Politics have no place here in terms of the decisions that we make. And then obviously, our, you know, making practical decisions and contractual considerations for staff also must be taken into account. And I've been, you know, very grateful for the collaborative relationships that we've had with our teachers association as well as our support staff association and our, our teachers union showing full support of the plan that I'm presenting to you tonight. Some terminology, I'm sure by now you are, you know, educational terminology and the jargon can get, can get, can get you twisted up, but by now, I think synchronous and asynchronous, you all know what it means, you're as tired of hearing it as I probably am saying it. But synchronous is the live instruction via online delivery and asynchronous is the on-your-own learning that a teacher may assign for a student to do when live instruction is not occurring. And then in-person obviously is when we return to the building. So the K5 hybrid overview, what we've kind of all been waiting for is, is that, that all of our K through five students will be given the opportunity to return to school for half a day in-person, instruction two days a week, or they may remain fully remote. That choice, as some of our parents alluded to earlier this evening, is extremely important and we're very happy. And there's always, throughout this entire pandemic, there will always be the opportunity for our families to, to remain remote. Any Illinois school, but especially here, the opportunity to remain remote. Providing meaningful in-person instruction for those opting to, while the live daily instruction for all will, will still occur. This is an extremely important point. Live daily instruction will occur for everyone. As we evaluated a number of different models, as we were making this plan and building this plan and live daily instruction had to be a part of what we were doing because we could not go backwards. While it may not be working for everyone, the live instruction is happening every day and interactions with our teachers happening every day is extremely important because it is working for some and it is working for a good number of our kids. And we want to be sure that, that, that continues. In-person in our schools will be, you know, safety, the IDPH safety guidelines of, as I've alluded to already, will be adhered to and will maintain six feet of that distance in our classrooms. And that, that's, that is also a very big deal. Our largest class size, when we split that in half, means that a maximum class size of 13 will be maintained. And we have the, we believe we have the space to, to take care of that, especially when you take into account that some will opt to remain remote.
And it's a maximum.
Maximum, that's a maximum.
Some of these will be 10.
Yeah, some of them will be less than, absolutely. So our, our kindergarten numbers are 18, 19, 20 students. So they'll be very small. Students regardless of their option will remain with their current teacher. This is another very important bullet point is if we had gone with another model, there would be the reality that we would have to re-section those students who opted to stay remote and that's not something that, that I was willing to do, especially when you think about a, a kindergartner, if this is their first experience. And we had heard examples from both ends of the spectrum tonight of a kindergartner who was not doing well, but then also a kindergartner who was doing well. I can't imagine having to tell a parent, now you have a kindergartner who's, has to have a new teacher. You know, that, that's not something we were willing to, to entertain. There may be a, a couple of very few scenarios where, where that has to happen, but there's a very valid reason for that, but it won't be because of a, of a choice to remain remote by the parent. And then this provides us a glide path for increased in-person time. So this is step one. And because of this step, there are other steps as, as, as our health metrics continue to improve and as, as things in our community continue to improve, we have more steps that we can take for increased in-person instruction as we move forward. And then finally, specials and will become asynchronous and explore will be reallocated. So I'm going to spend a few, a couple of minutes on this bullet. Our explore special, we talked about this quite a bit when we presented our, one of our options for, one of the game plans we had for reallocating a number of our support staff back when we were trying to, to make the in-person work. And explore was one of them that, that we were talking about reallocating in order to reduce class sizes. Our explore special is in its second year of existence. It's one of, it's a fantastic class. It's a project lead the way, hands-on STEM, STEM course. And we're going to have to reallocate it because we have a, a, a small handful of teachers who have a medically remote doctor's note, who can't physically be in the building when children are present. And we, there's no way around that. We have to support that and have to work with that. So in order to adhere to that, we also have to place a teacher in the classroom with the students that will be physically returning to the classroom. So what better way to do that, we thought, than the teachers that have been most recently in the classroom with a, with the easiest program for us to pause until we're able to return to norm, more normal circumstances. So explore's not going away. Explore will be back in full force as soon as we can return to normal. And those seven teachers across the district will be reallocated into a classroom to, to replace those teachers who have to be medically remote. And then some of them will be able to support in other ways, just to, to support whether it be interventions or in other, other like tutoring support around, around the district as well as those remote teachers also being able to support from their remote location. Specials becoming asynchronous, I'll talk a little bit more about this in later slides, but essentially in order to make our schedule work, the, the specials and the live instruction associated with specials, we had to dial that back as well. But our specials in terms of art, music and PE are not, obviously not going away. We, we value them greatly. Our specials teachers are fantastic people and they are, I mean, they dedicate their life to their passion of, of the arts. We as a school district have a, a community who appreciates the arts like, like almost no other. We've invested a great deal of resources in the arts in this, in this, in this district from the Black Box, we've just completed at the high school, to our Fine Arts Academy. And our specials teachers are, are awesome people and fantastic teachers who are just, we need to call on them for a slightly different approach to their instruction than live, weekly and daily instruction. And I'll go into more detail about that. All students will continue to receive synchronous instruction five days a week regardless of the option they choose. I say this a number of times because I really want to be sure we engrain that in everyone's head, that that is a really, really big deal. That is not something we were going to sacrifice. Synchronous instruction will occur for half a day, either in the AM or PM block with asynchronous instruction for the other half. Each K5 class will be split into two groups, Group A and Group B. Group A will attend in-person in the mornings on Monday and Thursday. Group B will attend in the mornings on Tuesday and Friday. Everyone will be remote on Wednesday. Okay, well, we will do everything we possibly can, expect it to be very doable, that siblings will be placed in the same Group A or B. I don't anticipate that being a problem, we want to make it as easy as we can on families. But just to, just to be totally clear and transparent, we were, groups are going to be randomly assigned, there's not going to be wiggle room in terms of moving group to group based on preference because the groups are going to be determined based on ensuring that we can balance our 70/30 special education split to, to ensure that we're adhering to the law. So we kindly request that whatever group you're assigned to, that you just move forward and, and, and not make that request unless there's something just completely special, but, but siblings, we will of course place in the same group. All right, on days when a student attends in-person school, they'll attend in the morning with the classroom teacher and receive live in-person instruction. They'll receive, they'll transport home either by parent or school transportation if needed during the lunch break and head home. And at, at home, the students participate in asynchronous learning activities, meaning the learning activities, literacy and math extension assigned by the teacher and specials teachers. On the days when they're 100% remote, they participate in the, in the AM asynchronous learning activities designed by their classroom teacher and specials teachers. After lunch, they join their classroom teacher for live synchronous teaching in their math and literacy lessons. Every Wednesday, they're fully remote for all students with synchronous instruction in the morning and asynchronous in the afternoon. So what I want to, I guess, pause on here before I go in and show you the schedule is, is think about the parents, some of the feedback that we receive from, from our parents, and I'll go into a little more detail about this later, but there's a number of different aspects of life and remote learning that parents have, have communicated with us about. And it makes a little bit more sense if I do it later, but the, but the, the ability for that asynchronous time to be flexible and for the, the family to determine when they are going to do it is really important because they get a little bit more control over their day and that rigid schedule, as someone mentioned here tonight, that they're, they're not locked into the elementary schedule from 8:30 until 2:15 or 3:00 every single day. I think it was the, our last gentleman who spoke, that he's not stuck by his child every single day during that window. The live instruction is, is static, but the asynchronous time can be moved around to whenever it's convenient. So if a parent wants to, wants to, you know, adjust their work schedule so that, so let's say the, the live instruction is going to be happening in the afternoon from, from 12:45 to 3:15 and it, it works better for their family for the asynchronous work to be done from say that, that 3:30 or 4 o'clock to 6:00, that entire morning is completely flexible for the family to do what works best for them if the parent wants to dedicate that to, to their work time. As I know that's been a, a struggle for families. So if a parent wants to, wants to, you know, adjust their work schedule so that, so let's say the, the live instruction is going to be happening in the afternoon from, from twelve forty-five to three fifteen, and it, it works better for their family for the asynchronous work to be done from, say, that, that three thirty or four o'clock to six, that entire morning is completely flexible for the family to do what works best for them if the parent wants to dedicate that to, to their work time. As I know that's been a, a struggle for families. All right, so walking through the schedule. Student Group A's daily schedule. You'll notice Group A was the person who was in, in-person remote on Mondays and Thursdays. You'll also notice that everyone has a common lunch across all of elementary. This was probably the most common request that we received from families. I think I spoke, you know, I, I say this jokingly, but I think I spoke with every large family in this school district as this was a, a very common thing from families with four and five kids, and you can imagine the stories that they shared. It, it painted a picture that I just didn't have of, you know, four or five children, the majority of them in elementary, and if their lunchtimes ranged from ten thirty until one, and how, how they could juggle feeding them and no one had any, someone to play with. And that, that, just that release time from school is a very real thing. So we were able to work that in, and then the asynchronous remote learning, as I said, is that flexible time, and then the, the live remote, remote learning is there. Group B, it just flips in terms of when the live instruction is taking place, live in-person instruction. And then if you opt to be remote, the majority of your live instruction is occurring in the afternoon other than that Wednesday morning that it occurs, but again, very flexible. All right, so this worked the last time we did this. Our current reality transitioning over to our new reality. So in remote learning, the current reality, two and a half hours of live instruction are occurring now, and then two and a half hours of asynchronous instruction interspersed throughout the day. In our new reality, two and a half hours of block live instruction will occur in the morning or afternoon, while two and a half hours of block asynchronous instruction will also occur. So the instruction time should balance out equally. It's just a matter of there won't be the shift of live instruction to some independent work and back to live instruction as a lot of elementary is, is more accustomed to. It's going to be more lumped together. Lunchtime, they were scheduled throughout the day, whereas now the common lunchtimes for K five is, is that same window of time, which I believe is a win for all of our elementary families. Specials and PE were a combination of live asynchronous, the live and asynchronous, whereas now all specials and PE should be completed. All special will be asynchronous, excuse me, and PE will be completed during that, that lunch and recess time in the middle of the day. I should, should note that specials, we, you know, we've had some, some preliminary conversations at the administrative level in hopes that, that specials being, you know, asynchronous, that we can go a little further with this. As we recognize that it is a good portion of our students who, their creative outlet really relies on their specials time, whether it be music or art, and they're really, that's, that's a highlight of, of a good number of our students' day. And our teachers, like as I mentioned earlier, the, the passion that they have for their, for their subject area is something that, you know, you know, sets them apart, but, but is very respectable. So we're hoping.
So can I stop you on that?
Sure.
One of my biggest questions, and I'm not understanding, I mean, how have we been executing those three specials, PE, art, and music at K through five asynchronously? I mean, I, how were the teachers engaged with the students at all if their kids are doing this on their own?
How will they? Well, Dr. Slick, you certainly chime in and paint that picture, would you?
So sometimes what'll happen in, and this actually happens in, even in some of our older classrooms where teachers might be flipping the classroom. So it might be a specials teacher or some banding together to record a short video and then ask students, okay, well, you know, around the house, here's a project, or these exercise, or, you know, whatever the pieces are. Sometimes it's a little, especially for our older kids who are readers, maybe there's an academic component or there's a, a different sort of activity that they ask them to do. So asynchronously, it would be the expectation, and I, I would, I would really think that our teachers would be still interacting with those students. It just wouldn't be live. So we would probably likely have those students seeing those teachers talking to them. It might not be in a live synchronous instruction, but it might be via a short video with that activity. And actually, we have had already some parents, just an additional note on that. That's actually fairly standard practice already because our specials are not every single one in person every day. So already our specials are on a rotation. Our current remote learning schedule really mirrors the typical elementary day and elementary schedule. So if you think about a typical elementary week, every special doesn't occur every day. But we have had our specials live occasionally synchronous as well as asynchronous. And so they, they already have had practice in designing some of those asynchronous activities. It's just that we would be pulling back that live component that, really, what, what we heard from families on that is that for some families, seeing that on the schedule, I have to get to specials now. It was just that one more piece online on a computer. And I, I really will tell you that, I mean, great lessons that were being designed, but the kids just, they didn't have it anymore at that point during the day. And so the families would, would sometimes even call and say like, almost ask permission, can I, do I have to go on for that? It's great, but I have to prioritize this other. And so we wanted to lift that pressure off of them while still offering the opportunity. And so that's what that would look like asynchronously. And our specials teachers have already done a great job with asynchronous work, and we would expect them to expand that. They would have some support and time and, and planning to do that.
Clarification.
Sure.
I was still having.
So as I, as I kind of was, was, the, the opportunity for our students to connect with our specials teachers in, in more of a, a kind of a passion project way to personalize it a bit is, is, is still there. So I think that, that's what, that's a kind of an opportunity we want to still explore. So that more information could be coming on that, but more of a, a student proposing a, a project, and that special's kind of mentoring that student through an art project, so that, that connection with, with, with our kids could still be there. We want to work with building administration with some ideas that have emerged at the administrative level and then be sure that, that's something that, that can be flushed out and, and ironed out, just to ensure that, that, that connection and that, that avenue for our students who rely on that, that outlet is still available to them. So the benefits of this obviously allows for compliance of the social distancing guidelines of the, of the six feet of separation in the classroom, staying with the same individuals through each class every day, wearing masks, of course, will, will be the requirement for attending school. It maintains the rigor of live instruction of every single day, which is something we were not willing to sacrifice. All students remain with their current teacher and provides the common lunchtime for K five, which, as I said, was one of the most common requests that we were receiving from families. The staff reallocation was likely is going to open up some of those opportunities for interventions and, and office hours of support for students and, and additional learning with our, through our explore teachers. And then families will have a full morning or afternoon of block asynchronous, giving them that flexible option that I was talking about. So I, I really hopeful that, 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 that's going to help our families that feel constrained by the rigorous school day. So, but if I paint the picture, back in the spring when we band-aided, what, you know, what, when we were forced into a closure, we thought was going to be two weeks, if you remember, and it ended up being the rest of the school year. The, our, our surveys at the end of that period, families shared with us that, you know, we understand that this was a kind of a crisis period, but it wasn't very much work. We, we need more in order to keep our kids engaged if we're ever in this situation again. And so what we built is what we have now, and the, the, the pendulum almost has swung so far to the other side in terms of the structure of the day that we provided, that many feel like they're, they're handcuffed or constrained into that, into that schedule. So this, this adjustment, we felt it was important to make an adjustment for all of remote learning regardless of a new hybrid option. But as we were flushing this option out, we also felt it was important to make one adjustment for both hybrid and remote. So that way we weren't adjusting schedules multiple times for families to make more adjustments to their schedules. So that way, if we have to at some point shift back into complete remote, the new schedule will remain intact and we won't have to make another adjustment to what that, that schedule will be like for families. So I'm hoping that that flexibility in the schedule will give them a little bit more flexibility in their day and those families, especially those that have been able to shift to a little bit more of a remote workplace or are able to kind of balance their, their lives a little bit more because we understand the, the impact that this is having on them. And then as I've mentioned before, this provides that glide path to maybe another step in terms of in-person learning beyond this, this initial hybrid, hybrid option to more days in the classroom. So some of the rationale, district parents and teachers agree, obviously, that we want to be back in person as soon as possible. The public health metrics and guidance, as I said, have stabilized. The day-to-day fluctuation is not something that we're going to focus on, but stable decision-making ranges will be what guides our decisions. County consensus on the meaningful health metrics are now in place. That's a huge game changer for us. I, I couldn't agree more with the public commenter that the, the metrics and having that and, and all of the county school districts following the same plan as to how we'll make those decisions, not only for transparency, but for honestly ease in decision-making. It's, this is, this is, this has been the hardest thing any of us have ever done. And the last thing we want to do is, is not do a good job in doing it. So we, we want to serve our community well and, and of course be transparent, but make good decisions for the benefit of our students, staff, and, and community. The clear benefits, I'm sorry, and then as, you know, we meet the, the McKinney County Department of Public Health, and they, they explicitly have said we are ready to make the formal recommendation that hybrid is, is where everyone in the county can and, and should be heading. There are clear benefits of increased in-person learning for K five students. Obviously, we know that, which is why we elected to start with our elementary students. But grades six through twelve are not left out. Six through twelve, I know it's the first time I've really mentioned six through twelve. It's more complex there. The student movement begins at six through twelve. Middle and high school socialization behaviors begin at six through twelve. We talked about student positivity rates. The positivity rates definitely do increase at that age group. The positivity rates that have been reported to us in the district from families are at that age group. So there's, there's increased not only concern, but our ability to maintain that six feet of separation, given the, the population sizes of our schools. We cannot maintain the, the, the six feet of distance at our middle and high schools, uh, high school like we can at the elementary school. That doesn't mean we're not moving forward with bringing students back for in-person learning opportunities. We're just not quite ready to share that publicly yet. We're still working in the background. We hope to have that information ready for you and, and, and the public very, very soon. And that will be the next step of our kind of return to in-person learning presentation that will, will come out very, very soon. The early childhood preschool is committed to bringing students back and is, their planning is also underway. Our preschool will return on the, at the same time as our elementary school students. Some considerations to always keep in mind. I mentioned it before, quarantines of student and staff are possible. And they will have large effects on the learning environment. They will have large effects on, on, on our ability to stay open. Circumstances beyond our control may force us on a situational basis to quarantine an entire classroom, to quarantine a school, to maybe even go backwards as, as a school district. This planned out, you know, but again, we, we will not make, that's not a snap decision. It's something that's going to happen, like you're going to receive an email from us at four o'clock on a, on a Friday night. It's going to say, hey, we're, we're going to be closed for two weeks on, on a Monday morning. We, we fully expect that with cooperation with McKinney County, we're going to have a window of time that we can offer as much notice as possible. How much? I don't know. We haven't done that yet. But I, I cer, I don't expect that this is going to be, pull the rug out from under you, hey, we're closed for two weeks because we have to quarantine the school district. But at the same time, I think as we move back into this direction of in-person, it's wise for everyone to have contingency plans for what happens if we do have to shift backwards in a fairly quick scenario of the, the county, the county health department recommends that we close for a period of time based on a, a sizable outbreak. The plan does not include options for sixty twelve at this point, but as I said, the incompatibility with those guidelines are, are standing in our way right now. We are still working on that, and that information will come out very, very soon. And then planning for ECC, as I said, will follow the same timeline as elementary. Lunch, lunch is something I haven't, haven't touched on yet. We are very happy that the federal government expanded and renewed our ability to, to offer lunch to everyone again. For a while there, we were only able to offer lunch to students that were on free and reduced lunch. And as you remember, in the spring, we were serving lunches every day to almost, or over seven hundred families. At the start of this school year, that dramatically reduced down to less than a hundred and fifty families a day. It was heartbreaking. So fortunately, that, that was renewed, and we're now serving lunches to seven hundred families again every single day. So there's a lot of planning that's going to have to take place as to how our returning to school will impact what our, our, our lunch pickup and delivery program has been. Mr. Altmeier and, and Mr. Reed, our food services director, are, are planning for that. And that, of course, will be communicated before, before we return formally. So what's the timeline and what's the process that's headed towards people, your inboxes? Very, very soon, tomorrow, our kindergarten through fifth grade families will receive communication from us to opt in and select either a remote or hybrid option for how they'd like to participate in their education moving forward at this point, as well as whether or not they would require transportation. If, if, obviously, if they can provide transportation themselves, that's fewer students on the bus. But if they need our transportation, of course, we have it. Selections will be due on September twenty-seventh. I know the last time when we asked for this, there was a very tight turnaround, and that was extremely challenging for families. We're, we're providing ample amount of time this time for them to make that decision. We have a month from today, or a month from this weekend essentially, for us to, to get everything in order for our students to return. Our preschool families will receive a separate notification about the process as well as their plan, but they will be returning on the same day as our elementary students. But they operate things just a little bit differently because they are more of a self-contained program. The target start date, as I said, is October nineteenth. All aspects of implementation, though, I should, this is a caveat, everything, this is a month away. If everything starts to change with, with the, the health metrics that I just shared, that could throw it all out the window. So we need to pay, we will continue to pay very close attention to that to ensure that we remain on the track that we are on. So again, as we kind of, as Mr. Quagmire, I know I alluded to before, and I touched on as well, we all need to continue to do our parts to ensure that these, that these positivity rates and the incident rates remain low and continue to go down so that we can keep on this path to returning to school. Bus routes, we expect those to be available for families in October, or on October fourteenth. We'll, of course, communicate those. And we are looking at a, a, an additional, our third remote learning planning day. That week of, before we come back to school, October twelfth is Columbus Day. Then on that Tuesday, the thirteenth, is an institute day. We are looking at that fourteenth as a possible remote learning planning day to work with some, some training and some planning time with our teachers to prepare for, to prepare for this. We'll, of course, communicate with you if that is something that we elect to, elect to do down the road. And then finally, the last slide, I know it's been a long presentation. Tomorrow, all District one fifty-eight families will receive their first survey of the school year pertaining to how remote learning is going. We definitely want that feedback. We welcome the feedback to use, help us improve. You know, feedback obviously is vital to our growth and success. We don't pretend that this has been perfect. You know, I know that, you know, I infuse a lot of positivity on, in terms of how I believe that it's gone. I don't, as I said, I don't pretend to believe that it's been going, it's gone great for everyone. But I do know that it has been, it has been very positive for a lot, and I'm extremely proud of the work that our, our teachers and, of course, the families at home have been putting in to, to doing their very best to make it successful. But we want to hear that, that, that feedback to ensure that, that everyone's voice is heard and we can make some adjustments to our practice to make sure that we are meeting the mark from what we, we said we wanted to do. And if you remember at the beginning, we said that our, our goals in terms of instruction, we're meeting our minimums of live, live instruction each week. We're feedback, regular and meaningful feedback for our, our students for growth as well as regular open communication between teacher and student and teacher and family. So there are some specific questions on, on how that's been, some open-ended questions we're asking for feedback on. So I'm looking forward to both celebrations as well as opportunities for us to improve. With that, I'll take any questions that the board has.
Um, I think you answered this, this is why I was like, I was thinking in a different way. When you're thinking about next, staff next phase, are you thinking more about getting the six to eighth grader or six to twelve grader?
That's a good question. I think ideally, I would love to get into our middle schools and bring our middle school kids back as a next step. I think that, you know, I said at the beginning, sixth grade is such an important transition, so much so that we did a welcome week with those students to make them feel comfortable in that transition. And the challenge that we face is the size of the class sizes. And when you have class sizes of 30 in some situations, splitting that in half and facing the same scenario that we did when we were about to open that forced us to consider shifting even sixth grade to hybrid at the 11th hour was the fact that even with those that went remote, we could not achieve appropriate distancing in the classroom. So we have to find a way to accomplish that. There's a number of different scenarios that we've already kind of looked at, none of which do I love, but then again, none of which are perfect in this scenario. And I think that it may come down to making decisions about what do we value? Do we value having a foot back in the door of in-person learning? Or do we value continuity and instruction? And I say that because we could, we could split the grade levels up and bring a quarter of the students in one day a week. But then you're in one day a week, but then the other percentage of the kids are zooming into the classroom that has six or seven kids in it. And while that may be a viable option, something we should consider, what are we sacrificing by doing that? And we just haven't, we haven't vetted that out completely. We've been so focused on getting elementary in, we haven't vetted that out. But that's an option. I have a call with World Architects tomorrow. I'm going to ask that they, that they measure and vet out exactly what that space is going to be and how many can we fit specifically so we know from an architectural measurement in our middle and high schools so that we can properly plan to maximize that. Because the way our brains think, it's not the same way that theirs do in terms of maximizing space. So we need to know that number and figure out what that target is. There are, the other option would be one I just don't like, which is bypassing the six feet of separation and bringing more kids in. And I just, I'm not there yet. And I don't know that that's a good, safe option for us. So we're faced with some tough decisions when it comes to the upper grades because of the size of our schools. But to answer your question more specifically, I think we need to go six through eight and figure out how we can get some of our high school students back before we expand elementary again. But some of the things that we are looking to do more immediate, the conversation has been around, starting with our students who have not been very engaged, and how can we bring them in for some additional support? And maybe that would help spark that engagement. And then also our students that are in, our special education students, maybe the direct instruction classes that we've kind of gone from self-contained and tiered theory, and there's a group that also needs some additional and special attention. That's about 100 students at the high school, but the logical step. We're investigating those, but again, very preliminary. That's a good question. I'm probably going to have to phone a friend and lean on Dr. Schlitz and her department for that one, or Dr. Del Castillo, maybe they have some insight. What I do know that has been happening on when students are not engaged is generally where that may be starting. Or if our teacher or counselor or assistant principal or dean is becoming aware of a student that those, some of those signs are popping up, getting them connected with one of the counselors, those sessions have, or social workers have been taking place. There have been a number of home visits with our administration and resource officers just to check in on kids that they haven't seen, haven't been coming around to make sure they're okay, let them know that we care about them and we want them involved. But in terms of specifics, I'll pitch to them and see if they have more information than I.
I'll start and then pass it over. So just like I think with in-person school in a typical year, our teachers are really our first point of contact with our students. So our teachers see our students every day virtually, but they do see them. So there are times that a teacher might flag disengaged students that maybe just don't attend, maybe take one tack, but sometimes you have that student that's very inconsistent or is just displaying different behaviors, those types of things. They would flag in-person, but they flag even more now sometimes. Strangely, on a screen like that, sometimes you can actually see more of somebody's facial expression than you can in a larger room. And so teachers are able to really read those situations. We still have our typical referral to counselors. Social workers are working. So some of our typical processes are still functioning, albeit remotely. We also do have, as I think Mr. Armstrong's been working on with Ms. Romero, who is our Director of Curriculum for Social Emotional Learning, working on a mental health hub. That was actually available in the spring for parents as well, even being built out further, just adding resources. You know, obviously, we're not always aware of which of those folks are using, if they don't choose to inform us. But we do have families that reach out. And then at the building level, really with that point of contact on the ground, they're able to intervene. And then, of course, even just for students, we've kind of got the two sides, as you've heard us present on social emotional learning. We've got the learning side, you know, helping students with perseverance. I think everybody has needed perseverance in this situation. And like, how do you dig down and, you know, get through a situation? And really, you're getting sick of Zoom, how do you keep attending? How do you move through difficulty? Those types of things can be taught, but they also, when a student is in distress, happens to adults too, it can tip over that line into that mental health distress. And so we try to provide resources on both sides. I do, I do believe just from the data in the schools that our counselors, our PST teams, even some of our RTI interventionists who are with kids in small groups, one-on-one, and our teachers, counselors, very engaged. It is definitely more challenging when kids are at home. If a family chooses not to flag, that's when those home visits might come in with concern. We just had to be more creative in that sense. And then Dr. Del Castillo, do you have any additional?
Well, no, just to add to that, we do have, the point of contact is definitely the building level. We have our social workers just reaching out to houses and to homes of our students. And we do have now our family engagement liaison talking, you know, and reaching out to families and planning some home visits. But that's how we are reaching out to our families and especially to our special education students.
I think that to add to that, you know, we talked a lot about the disengaged, but I don't think that, it can't just live there. Because just because a student may be disengaged or not, remote learning's not working for them, it doesn't mean they're emotionally okay either. So some of the students who may be fully engaged, they may be really struggling. So I think that that partnership between home and family is, at home and school is what we're really, really needing. So those that are listening or those that may follow up with the Voice or in the news communications that are outlets that are here, please reach out to your teacher or school. We have resources to help if your student is struggling, if you as a parent are struggling to support your child. We may not have all the answers, but we're another ear, and we do have resources at our disposal that we can and we want to offer and help navigate this tough situation. Because we don't expect our families to be experts in terms of solving all of the unexpected emotional ups and downs that come with a crisis that none of us have ever navigated before. But we definitely want to be an ear and a partner in that process. Well, I'm really glad to hear that, that you have the support that you need. But if there are families that feel that way, please reach out. Because we are here and we want to help. Well, as I mentioned during the process, we have had ongoing conversations with our teachers' union leadership, and they have offered full support to the plan. I can't say that all of our teachers are 100% gung ho about returning. They're nervous. There's a lot of unknown. There's a lot of anxiety around the environment that we live in, and it's understandable. But what I can say is our students will be masked, our teachers will be masked. Our teachers have all of the appropriate PPE that they need to feel safe, whether it be a mask, a mask and a face shield, you know, the appropriate cleaning supplies for the classroom, if they would like to do additional cleaning in their classroom, hand sanitizer in every classroom. Even though the students in hybrid will only be in for a few hours, the teacher still has the same flexibility of taking a mask break if they feel their kids need it as they work on those transitions. But what I'm hearing from the school districts that have been in a hybrid fashion in Batavia and in St. Charles that I've been collaborating with, the kids are doing just fine. It's the adults transitioning that are struggling with this. But what, in a call that I have with Dr. Hitchens just this week down in Batavia, she shared that they're doing quite well. And then once the teachers got over the hump, she has seen that anxiety level decrease. So I'm really hopeful that that's what we see here as well. I know our teachers are really excited about having kids back in the building, and it's a double-edged sword for them. You know, they want, they need kids. We went into this profession to help kids, and none of us, you know, became teachers because we wanted to teach kids through a computer. You know, they want their kids back. Our elementary teachers want to hug kids. They want to get them back in the classroom and show them the normal love and attention that they do when they're here. But at the same time, they're also very aware of the threats and the concerns, and, you know, and we respect that. So that's why I think slow, methodical, strategic as we move forward. We don't want to move too quickly. It's very, very rash. So to answer your question, everyone's not 100% on board. But the Department of Public Health has signed off and said it's time for us to be hybrid. Therefore, the experts are saying it's time for us to be hybrid. Our teachers' union is in support, and I think it's time for us to move forward. And we're going to do so and take care of them along the way. This is not a, you know, we're going to walk side by side.
Yeah, I think what you'll find is, and this again comes from personal experience, having been in an office for 25, having had three people who have had COVID, including myself, and having a lot of people afraid and working remote for a long period of time and having them come back, there is trepidation at first. And again, you got to provide an environment that's safe. Everybody needs to follow the rules. And once they can do that, there will be a time in a week or two where they do become more comfortable and that trepidation will subside if everything's followed and everybody does what they're supposed to do. I mean, that's what I found. It's worked out in my office, overcoming those fears, and they're legitimate. I mean, they should be. You have three people in a 25-person office, get it. It's an issue. And I think, like you said, if, I'm glad they're on board now and, you know, just procedurally, if everybody pays, you know, follows the rules and does what they're supposed to do, I think they'll be okay ultimately at the end of the day. I don't know, Bill, if you, I'm sorry to interrupt you here.
Thank you. Dr. Raw, I just want to thank you for that presentation and the work that you and your staff has done to put this together. It's no small task. And it's a lose-lose. I mean, you know, there's no right or wrong answer to this, and you guys are trying to figure it out as you go along. So I appreciate you. And personally, I'm, I think the kids should be in school. That's my personal opinion, but I also think that we need to give them choices. And so you're trying to do that, and I appreciate that. And, you know, I do e-learning with a kindergartner and a third grader, and it makes me appreciate our teachers more every day that goes by that I'm trying to figure this out. So my questions, when we say the word hybrid, that's a very gray area to me. Hybrid, it's, you know, there's all different models of hybrid. And we've chosen, as our hybrid mill, to go back to two days a week, half-day for, you know, either A or B. Why can't we do a deeper dive into hybrid where we do, A kids go five days or four days a week in the morning, and B kids go four days a week in the afternoon? And then on Fridays, that's for, you know, professional development for teachers and maybe some SEL for the students. Have you considered that? Have you guys talked about that?
Well, we did. We did.
Because I feel like two days, two days for a half a day, it just doesn't seem like much. And we're not really, I feel like we're not helping our parents as much as we probably should or could.
We did consider, not that specific model, but we did consider the model of half-day morning and half-day afternoon just every day of the week. And the reason that we shied away from that was our ability to clean in between groups of students. And we'd have to rely, we don't have the custodial staff. I mean, Mr. Brinkowski is welcome to chime in if he'd like to, but we don't have the custodial staff to clean all of our elementary schools to the level that they need to be cleaned in between groups of students. And we'd have to rely on our teachers, which would eat into the contractual time that they have for lunch as well as prep that we owe them. Additionally, in order to accomplish that, we would have to re-section all of our students who choose to be remote, and they would get a teacher different than the teacher that they currently have. And we would be facing the same problem that we had in July, where we would have remote sections only, and we would have to pull all those teachers out. And we may be facing an inability to get class sizes where they are now. Because we may have, we may have class sizes larger than we have because we would be losing, last time we had 43 remote sections. Now, we don't have any remote sections. We have remote students in our regular sections, so our class sizes are much lower. So that's a pretty major factor as to why that couldn't work.
So if we couldn't do two half-days, what about like two days, you know, two days a week for Group A, two days a week, full days, Group B, and then Friday for?
That was also a similar model that we also investigated. And the same problem would happen in that we would have to re-section the students who opted to be remote, so they'd have to get a new teacher. And we'd face the same problem in terms of the number of teachers that would have to be the remote teacher. Plus, on the day that they were remote, it would be all asynchronous work. So we would, then there'd be no live instruction that could be offered on the days that the students were working from home. And I felt that would be a step backwards in terms of, although the students would get two full days of in-person, which we loved, the two days that they were at home, it would be all asynchronous practice work because the teacher wouldn't have the ability to provide live instruction. And I thought that was, we felt that was a step backwards in terms of quality of teaching. So those, that's how we ultimately, those are the three models that essentially we did discuss.
I'm just thinking like more face time with the teacher and how we can do that. Because hybrid, there's all different types of hybrid. We see other schools doing other things too. So I'm just wondering how other schools, you know, I know somewhere like Marengo, they're so much smaller, we can't compare ourselves to them, but like St. Charles.
But some of the other districts like Batavia and St. Charles, they're doing it every other day. Full day and then off day. And on that off day, it's asynchronous. So, you know, that's one of, in our opinion, that's one of the struggles of those communities is those kids are not receiving live instruction in the days that they're not there. So it's a trade-off. Where is our, where do our values lie? Do we want a full day of instruction and the kids being there? And then the day that they're off, how much work does it become where the, we're sacrificing quality on that asynchronous day versus the connection with the teacher, albeit remote through the computer? But is it, is it still better than five hours that we're required to engage them for by the state? by the state worth of virtual worksheets?
Yeah.
You know, so there's a balancing act that I think we have to play. And so we placed our value in the live instruction daily, not having to force those families that chose to be remote to have to get a new teacher a month into the school year and live daily instruction.
Understand. I just wish that we could find a way to
Us too.
have more face to face time with the teachers, especially the younger kids.
But I think that, going back to where Mr. Garin was, I think that as we take a step, and, you know, Mr. Cragley, I pointed out, after a couple of weeks, we start to realize, hey, we can do this. We're here. I think that the next logical step will become a little bit more clear, and we'll tackle that issue. And we may be faced, down the road, we may be faced with the reality that we may have to tackle one of those obstacles that we're just not willing to right now.
And we can do that within the hybrid metric.
We could, oh yes, we can. We may have to just change our model. But when we change our model, there's just consequences to those decisions, and we have to be, we have to understand what those consequences are. And any of those decisions, some of those consequences may be, a kindergartner has to get a new teacher halfway through the school year, and are we okay with that? I'm not.
No, I don't like that idea either.
Are we okay with not having live instruction every single day? That may be the one, but, you know, where's the give and take? Or are, you know, some of the, some of the other schools are really struggling with having kids zoom into the live classroom where the kids, some kids are physically present, and the kids that are remote are zooming in. That was our original plan. And some school districts that are doing that are really struggling with it and saying that it was, it's been a real challenge for their teachers to manage both groups. So there's, again, there's no perfect scenario. There's a ton of bad options to try and make a decent sandwich with. And it's just how do we make it, you know, tolerable?
Right, right.
Until we can be back to normal.
Back to my lose-lose, you know.
But along your question, okay, sticking with her question here. In regards to teachers being able to deliver and plan education, I'm guessing that helps them the schedule that you have, that they can be a little bit, deliver education a little bit easier and more consistently around a different type of schedule?
I don't know that I can say, I can't say, and I can't say that. I think that actually our principals believe that this schedule is going to be a little bit more challenging for teachers.
Okay.
Given the fact, because they're teaching in two different mediums in the same day. Although the lesson is going to be a similar lesson.
Right.
But teaching in person, you can teach and go further than you can online. And I think we heard that with some of our, some of our parents that were sharing with us today of the gentleman whose wife was helping his youngest read. So our teachers are going to be able to do more in person than they can online. I think we all understand that. But, so how they have to plan for in-person instruction versus online instruction, there's different levels of planning for even the same lesson. So on those Wednesdays when we're completely remote, those afternoons when our students are asynchronous, our teachers are going to have additional time to collaborate with one another to try and balance that workload and offer a little bit of life balance for them, I'm hoping, so they can collaborate as a team so that they can keep advancing. Right now, you know, every team, every grade level is in a different place. We have some grade levels reporting that they're finally getting almost a week out in terms of their planning, whereas others are still a day, maybe two days ahead of themselves because of the, just the struggle of where they are in terms of their planning and transition. So we're hoping that a little bit more collaboration time that they'll be able to get with an asynchronous afternoon is going to be beneficial to them.
Right, which brings me to my next question, or I guess a clarification. So if, you know, you're on A day and you have in-person learning in the morning, and there's that lesson, then in the afternoon, the teacher has to repeat that lesson, right? But in a remote basis. So now the teacher is doing two different lesson plans.
Essentially.
Right, so they're doing twice the work now to have the kids in the classroom. I worry about the teachers.
I mean, I'm no elementary teacher. I've not made an elementary lesson plan. But essentially, it's the same lesson delivered in two different modes. So it's different work, but it's essentially the same standard that they're teaching two different modes. So it's definitely, it's different work, and it's going to be more work to prepare that differently.
So having the kids in the building.
But I don't know that it's the same as two completely different, like planning two different days. But again, I haven't walked in those shoes personally to say that. I have to rely on.
Neither have I, I'm not an educator.
Ms. Lombard or someone who's been an elementary teacher.
So are our teachers doing more work to have the kids in the building? Yeah, half the time, twice the work. Is that, is that what's happening?
Dr. Sutler, please.
So at all levels, something I've talked to a lot of teachers, actually even in other districts about, is I think what you're referring to is it's not so much planning a different lesson, it's that the lesson design that you have to do for online learning. I was actually just talking to one of our high school teachers the other day. And, because you'll hear teachers expressing it in different ways, and I can even personalize it to myself. I was a high school social studies teacher. And thinking about what do you do in the room? How do you design what you're going to do to reach the outcomes you're hoping for for students? It is absolutely a different design. And so that's why we hear, we heard last spring even some veteran teachers, fantastic veteran teachers, saying, I feel like a first year teacher. And it's because that first year, we all remember our first year teaching, when we were just frantically designing these lessons for the first time and trying to get our feet under us. And so what we're going to try to do is to streamline the fact that the teachers are needing to design the same lesson but in person and remote. And there's definitely a level of preparation that we've heard from our staff, and it stands to reason, happens remote. In person, you know, you don't have to upload all your links ahead of time. You know, in person, you can hand something to kids. In person, you can just say it. Online, you need to make sure in a different way that they heard it. So we've definitely heard that from our teachers. Like Dr. Rowe said, it's one of those things where we're looking at, we make sure we get the contractual planned time, and then we add that additional afternoon. Our principal, our building principal's actually advocated very, very strongly for that additional afternoon collaboration time. But essentially, it is, it's, the online environment at all has been, it's just been a lot of work. Again, just because of that lesson design. So this will be something that teachers will need support for, and we're already starting to think forward and plan for. It's a little bit part of that balance that Dr. Rowe was referring to. So every single one of the decisions we make in this environment is just, what are you gaining here for what it costs a little bit? And really, in this environment, bringing students in while other students are still remote, no matter how we slice it, is going to result in having to design for in-person and remote at the same time. As we get critical mass moving through this process, as we were talking about that glide path, we're hoping that teachers can start to focus more of their attention on one or the other, right? Assuming that all the metrics cooperate. But yeah, there's no doubt, just to be transparent, that that is, that is the challenge. It's the design of in-person, the design of remote.
Thank you. I just have one more quick question or something to ponder. We talked about K-5, and then 612 is not really ready. But you did mention that the sixth graders, it's just such a pivotal year for them. What, what about just having the sixth graders in the building? They could spread out all over the building. Have you, have you explored that?
Well, it's still about the space. I mean, they can spread out all over the building, but it's still about, if they spread out all over the building, there's still only a number of teachers that they can be with. And if half of each classroom is with their assigned teacher, we, even in a, we don't have enough learning spaces that are the large learning spaces to convert the cafeteria and the gyms to accommodate that level of space. I mean, if, and then if we do that, we could do that, and we could start working on that. But then at what point, then it's just sixth grade? But so I think where we're at is let's evaluate what, where's our point that we have to hit of sixth and seventh and eighth in terms of what size do we need in terms of the classroom? And then we can evaluate if we convert some of our other learning spaces in the building. But those rotations were just, like I said, we're just not there yet in terms of, our focus has been on elementary.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Sure thing. Yeah.
All right. I just had a couple of questions. We talked about a maximum of 13 kids potentially in the room. Will these kids be sharing desks? Or will all of it, will every student have their own desk that's just empty on the day when they're not there? Or are we only putting?
We would only be putting the number of desks that that classroom, the maximum number of desks of students in that classroom. So if it's, if there are 13 students that are, can fit in the classroom, but only 11 of those students are signed up to come, then we'd only have 11 desks in that classroom.
For each, for each day plan?
Nope, in elementary. I mean, if, depending, like if there's, I mean, if there's, say, nine students on A group and 10 students on B group, then we'd have 10 desks in the classroom.
Okay, so we're.
Our buildings will be cleaned every single night by ABM with our normal sanitation processes as well as the EMIS is necessary. Mr. Rinkowski, I'm sure would be happy to explain the building cleaning process and sanitation process. It's been a while since we've touched on that. But that process is tight and sound, and ABM has been actively doing that every night with our teachers in the building.
So would the students then be bringing their supplies home with, back and forth as opposed to storing them in the classroom?
We have classroom cubbies in all of our elementary classrooms. So we would be able to have a space in the room dedicated to the student to store any supplies. That's actually, that's a good question. I hadn't thought about that yet.
No, that's, you know.
They would have a.
We're all brainstorming here, so.
Yes, they'd have a cubby in the classroom that, just like a normal elementary where they're, they typically would store like their crayons and things in their desk, but in their cubby where they keep their gym shoes that they wouldn't need, they could certainly keep all of those things there.
Right, okay. Good, and one other question. Can you maybe touch on what will the protocol be if a child starts, you know, complains of an ailment? Say the kid's been, you know, maybe in one of the self-contained rooms hypothetically, has been crying, now we're like a half hour later, and from screaming and crying, the throat is now sore, and the child's like, my throat hurts. What is the protocol? Is it going to be very black and white? Or is there going to be that kind of judgment call? Or is the county?
Well, we try not to leave those to judgment calls. We have a very tight process and protocol that we follow. And I'm actually going to let Mrs. Lombard take that because she's been working with our nurses in the county health department to build that protocol.
Thank you.
So with the symptoms, a lot of symptoms that are COVID-like are also symptoms for other conditions. Could be asthma, could be allergies, things like that that are going on. So one of the things that changed with guidelines and guidance from IBPH or maybe got firmed up was even if you know a student or a staff member, if it's the first time they're coming down presenting or marking yes on the self-certification that they're having that ailment, you no longer can go back and say, oh, this person has allergies, it must be this. They will have to go home, and then there are three ways to return. One of those is to see your doctor, who can write a note saying, these symptoms are based on such and such. And so then now you have that information as that school nurse. That wouldn't be forever, like it's not for the whole school year because things would change as, you know, the seasons change and all those kind of components. They could quarantine for the X number of days or would have a negative test. And so what you're talking about is more if there was a situation that maybe somebody got escalated now, they're sweaty, they have a little bit of a fever, but it's not a fever. It could be because they were so escalated, or their throat is sore or whatnot. Could be, you know, could be stomach. It could be all kinds of different ailments that are going on. What we would hope as they're coming down is the whole situation would be evaluated, and that's where that nurse would be able to use professional judgment on those kinds of situations. So what would be happening in the classroom? We'd get information from the staff that was working with that student as well as that. You could probably tell a little bit of a difference between, is it, you know, is it a sore, scratchy throat, or is there any redness? Again, our nurses can't diagnose, but they can use all of that information to make the decisions. It wouldn't just be, oh, I hear a little scratch in your throat. I know what happened for the last hour or whatnot. You're going home. They would look at those situations and make those decisions. But then if it is a situation where they are sent home, those are, there are three specific ways that we don't have any leniency on for that return to come back.
Okay, thank you. Because I just think of, you know, not just situational like that, but even the little kids, maybe they didn't get enough sleep the night before, and like my head hurts, you know, and something very innocent, and, you know, now.
Well, I think sometimes you have, it doesn't actually, like you said, it doesn't just need to be a special needs student. Some kids can't explain, the younger that they are, how they're feeling. They may use something. And so a lot of that is through questioning with the student and that nurse or calling home and talking with a parent about, you know, that situation. Again, especially if, you know, depending on how long they're there, maybe they just did some exercise, and there's something going on. We have to look at all those situations to be able to determine.
But it is one of the challenges that we face when some of the symptoms of the virus are symptoms that some might face if they have seasonal allergies or other simple cold-like symptoms. But given the fact that the virus could be very serious, and as our Northwestern medicine counterparts have shared with us, everyone reacts differently to the virus. It's not just prior medical conditions. Everyone reacts differently. And the county health department just doesn't allow us to take judgment precautions based on, oh, I'm sure it's just allergies. We have to take it all very, very seriously because, like I said, it's everyone else's health that we're in our hands to.
And with that, Dr. Rowe, we're not, in a situation like that, they could say, I have the allergies. I have, you know, chronic migraines or whatever that might be. That would be one of those situations where the nurse would say, that might be true, but we cannot, we have to err on the side of caution on those. What you just first described was just a little bit different, where you've got to look at the situation of what happened just prior to that. But some of the things Dr. Rowe talked about, that would be very cut and dry, that they would have to, they're going to mark yes, they have to go home until they get that alternate diagnosis.
Okay, yeah, I think, you know, I like that, that we're going to be, you know, the share, have that consistency and that black and white and, you know, that across the board, it's understood. So I appreciate that. Thank you. I think I'm done.
Thank you for that presentation. The first question I had, we're going to continue to do self-reporting on kids. The parents have to call in, or what's the protocol on that?
Yes, we have a, our parents will do a monthly health report, a monthly health screen. It's actually about that time we'll be sending out that monthly health screen for October, early, probably early next week with our recertification. So all parents that have children that will enter our buildings as of October the first will have to have that monthly health screen completed. Those that have entered in September, you completed it already, but each month it will be completed. And what that health screen essentially designates is it certifies is that I, as the parent, acknowledge that these are the COVID-19 symptoms, and that I, as the parent, give, you know, acknowledge that it is my responsibility and know that each day I check my child and will not send them to school if they have these symptoms, or which is, you know, fever and all the other COVID-19 symptoms, and that if they do, I will keep them home from school. So by sending them to school, I certify that they are healthy enough to attend.
Second question, there was one of our commenters early on asked about, and I'm paraphrasing, the cost of COVID, whether it was for PPE spending dollars or just in general. That person wasn't here for the budget hearing because that was covered in the budget hearing. Just wanted to make sure that that was acknowledged in case they missed it, that that, between the cost of revenues to the district and the amount that's being spent, it is over $2 million. So that's not for you, obviously, that's just for clarity purposes. Protocol for busing seating. How has that been taken a look at as far as what that seating arrangement is, could potentially look like?
Sure, I'll let Ms. Lombard take that one as well.
So what are the things?
So what are the things? Obviously, we know that there can be up to 50 on the bus. We know that there, and some buses might have a bus aid as well as the driver, so you'd have to remove those. Our goal is not that we would always have that 50. Part of the thing with the transportation, part of it actually goes with what Leslie was looking about, AM and PM and all of that. Until we know how many people are actually going to use, we have kind of an idea from the first survey that went out, but not sure if parents' needs have changed a little bit with that. So we're still going to use that guideline and trying to space out the best that we can with our resources. And that might change. If we're only transporting elementary right now, we might be able to do a little bit more with that. What we will be doing, depending on how many are on there, they would have that seating chart that first and foremost, we're going to put siblings together. Sometimes they might not want to ride with their siblings. Sometimes they will. But we're definitely going to do that because we can put them in the same seat, and that would allow some of the things that are going on. Right now, we have, you know, just a handful of kids that are on a school bus as they're going for their hybrid learning right now with our classes, and they can have a number of seats behind. Our goal would be that we would try to have that every other, every third if you can, because that's that radius. If I was on the bus and I became a positive case, the radius that they would look at for kind of guidance from McHenry County Health Department right now would be that three, kind of that three-seat radius there component of that. And so if we're able to do that and meet that, we absolutely will. But a lot of that is dependent on how many riders would be riding on that bus, and so that will kind of shorten that up. But we'll have seating charts, and again, families, siblings together, and then being able to space out the best we can based on those numbers.
And because we're not busing the entire district, we should, we'll have enough buses to accommodate whatever that seating arrangement's going to turn out to be? Because I don't, I don't expect it to be, well, I don't know what I expect it to be. But it shouldn't be an issue, right, that we run out of space?
Well, it should not, no, it should not. But every bus might look a little different. We can't say that every bus will only have 13, or every bus will have 25 on there. Part of that is dependent on who's coming, what neighborhoods they're in, and looking at that. We also have, you know, with our resources right now, we would be looking at, do we need to add additional resources? And remember, that's not hiring new. It might be, you know, recalling and bringing some additional resources back based on those things. So that survey is really going to be great for helping with that. We do have more flexibility now. The more students that we would be bringing in, whether it's for additional days or longer times, or some of those small groups up at the secondary level and the middle school level, we would then have to kind of make some shifts with our resources. So that might change a little bit as well.
Okay. Thank you. Can you bring up the chart with the schedule blocks, please? So yeah, Group A. So Group A would have asynchronous in the afternoon, then on Monday. And on Tuesday, B comes in and does the live, the live in-person.
Correct.
Is trying to overlap the two mentally?
Right. So on Tuesday and Friday, B is in session. So live teaching will be taking place on Tuesday and Friday. Therefore, that is why live remote is afternoon on Monday, on Tuesday and Friday.
Okay.
For this A group.
I saw it, and I'm trying to mentally picture the A and B.
Sure.
On top of each other.
That's why.
Because that's the two groups within one classroom and how that schedule looks. Thank you.
Sure.
And then evaluation timeline. When, when we started the school year, we said to the parents, "This is first quarter. We're targeting second quarter." So now looking forward at third quarter, is there an evaluation timeline to gauge where we're at and to see if we're moving forward for these, this grades, these grades, you know, can't, or will we continue with the status quo into the third quarter?
Well, I think what we, I think what we need to do is we need to allow the county health metric system to be our guide in terms of remaining in our current modality of being hybrid. And in terms of, as we, as we addressed earlier with Mrs. Melendez's question, focusing on what, what does six through 12 look like, and how can we make some strides there in terms of getting our students back in while adhering to the IDPH safety guidelines? And as we get to that point, we can then continue looking at elementary, and is it appropriate then to take another step? So I don't know, we don't necessarily want to put, I don't have a specific date on it, but we're going to allow those health metrics to guide us of, can we stay doing in hybrid? Are we, do we continue moving toward that green, or do we, or are we back towards remote?
And this schedule allows for flexibility enough so that if we move in a positive way and we're able to add more kids into the classroom, or whatever, there's not a lot of shifting that's going on, that they will be able to keep their teacher regardless of where we move on that chart, that guideline chart, the stoplight chart.
That is, that is, that is the plan. And that's one of the beauties of this plan is that continuity for the student and the teacher remains intact, is they will be with the same, the same group and that same teacher, and the teacher with the same group of students. That, you know, at some point, if we, if we need to make a big shift in terms of how, that may be one of the decision points, as we kind of discussed a little earlier, of are we willing to go to that road? Right now, I don't think that it's a good idea. But that's one of the decision points that steered us away from other models this time around.
Right. So I want to follow up to what you're saying.
Sorry.
On the same, so, I mean, is there a scenario within this second semester, or second quarter, excuse me, where this would be modified if things were positive, where you'd be back quicker, I guess is what I would be curious as to? Or do you envision this kind of having to be the model throughout the second semester?
I would say most likely we're going to be in a hybrid model for quite some time. I don't, I don't think we're going to be doing anything quick.
Okay.
I think that, again, as I said, we need to be strategic, and we need to be methodical about our approaches to ensure we don't go backwards. You know, my concerns about, now we might be able to move quicker at the elementary than we can at the secondary.
Right.
But my concerns lie at the secondary level in terms of our ability to bring students back in any sizable groups, and being able to do so without, and maintaining the social distance. And we have to, we have to find ways to manage those, that spacing and the class sizes, and how students space with one another to ensure that it's a safe environment. But then, we're all for moving down that path, but we have to, we have to tackle that first. And I'm hopeful that we're able to come back soon with a plan as to what that could look like for further discussion.
No, no, that's okay. There's another question that's stuck in there somewhere, but it's still, still stuck. So I'll, I'm done. I'm done.
You can come back, yeah? Yeah, that's okay. Okay. Sean, if you're there, are you ready?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, now I hear you.
All right. So I only have two questions. One of them, I think, was already touched on. But with, you know, just with the, the live instruction days, I assume, because we kind of talked about this at the bus, that, you know, if you had three children like the woman earlier, previous, those three children, if she chose in-person, would be going on the same day even though they're in different grades?
That is correct. If at all possible, that is correct. I don't, I can't see a scenario why it wouldn't be possible. But our principals are telling me that is their priority, that all families would be scheduled on the same day.
Okay. But I wouldn't want to make it harder on what it already is for her. And then my last one, which is, you know, it's kind of a silly one, but I can, I can see it happening. I'm just wondering if you kind of thought about this. But, you know, these children are used to having all the materials at school, and what they're going to be doing every other day, home or at school, with some of their phonics books and things like that. Do we have workarounds for when these kids are going to be leaving it at school, or taking it home, or even at home and they're at school?
That's an interesting question. It's one that, it's not an insurmountable challenge. I can, I can tell you that. But there, the kids that go through the backpack packing process, we would, teachers would have to navigate and start that up just to ensure they have everything, a checklist each day before they go home. And if they forget something, you know, kids forget things, and we will certainly take care of them. I don't, I don't believe that's something to, to cause too much concern, but it'll happen, and we'll work through it.
And that's all I have. Everybody else has asked all my questions, and I appreciate you guys putting together a great plan to return to school.
And Sean, I apologize for earlier, I got a sight out of mind on some of the discussions earlier. I don't know if you had anything on some of the other topics, but I apologize for kind of skipping over you there.
No problem.
Okay. Paul, did it hit you yet? Okay. We'll see. I'll buy you a second here. Not a lot. So, you know, one of the biggest things I see parents expressing in their emails and is the, you know, the socialization and the kids are missing, you know, with their peers and stuff. And, and again, I don't want to set these people up for, you know, give them the right impression of what it's going to be like for their kids in school. I mean, the kids are going to be in death, death apart, and they're not going to be encouraged to be, you know, they're going to be, you got to stay away from each other.
That's correct.
So I, you know, I know everybody wants things to go back to normal as soon as possible, but the version of normal, even in in-person learning, it's not going to be normal. Okay? It's people's expectations of what that's going to look like, and what their kids, the experience. It's not going to be what it was last year when they were going to school and they're on the playground and doing whatever. It's, it's, it's not, not going to be all fun and games when it comes to that. I'm sure the teachers will try to do their best to make it a happy and nurturing environment for them. But again, I don't want people's expectations to be such that, okay, well, they're back in person for that two and a half hours, and it's, you know, it's okay, we're all collaborating around a desk, and I mean, that's, that's not what's going to happen here, right?
No. No, it's going to be very different. It's, it's going to be a pretty sterile environment.
Yep.
The spacing that'll be, that'll be, that'll be present is going to look very different. The masks that everyone, of course, has been wearing. I think we're all pretty used to that now. But still, the students will be welcomed with the same warm, loving environment that our teachers always provide. However, there are still, the physical barriers that exist of whether it be a mask, or a mask and a face shield, or a mask, a face shield, and a gown. If a teacher feels more comfortable in that, it's possible.
Right.
We saw that on the first day with some of our special education self-contained students, or, you know, teachers that had, that feel more comfortable with a shield, a plexiglass around some of their kidney tables where they're working with their small groups, the dividers if they have to bring students a little bit closer together to, to do groups, where the plexiglass divider is there. It's a different environment. It's going to take some getting used to.
Right.
The value lies in face-to-face instruction and working with a highly skilled, trained instructor to guide the kids through learning, reading, and math. That's our focus. But it is very different. It's a different environment, for sure.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, what is the feedback from like St. Charles and the other schools you're talking to that are in-person as to that environment? Again, my opinion is kids, kids are pretty resilient. Again, it's mostly the adults who always have the problems. So I, have the kids, do you think the kids have been experiencing problems?
So the feedback that I've received has been a little bit mixed. And I'll take that one step further of Batavia, mainly, primarily Batavia, and then, and then Cane Land, who's also has been in, is, Batavia's reporting very positive experiences, that their students are having a good experience. They're, they're happy that they returned. Been very encouraging. Been great to collaborate with. And Cane Land, while, you know, I, you know, I have, I've been able to connect with a teacher who gave me a very different perspective. So I have not spoken with Dr. Layden, and like, again, don't want to put words into that school district's mouth. But from a teacher's perspective at a middle school, it was a very different environment, and kids were struggling with the fact, especially at lunch and social times, that they were having to, to be so separate from one another. Now, that's a different age group, to take it with a grain of salt, of students that are typically, lunch in middle school is the time where you, it's your time to totally just be a kid and be 11, 12, and 13. But the separation where you, you can't be six and seven years old where you want to run up and give your friends hugs and hang on one another. It's, you know, it's not going to be met with harsh criticism from the adults, but it's going to be with a redirection to try and remind students about personal safety. So it's going to be different, but we'll overcome that. And kids, like you said, kids are resilient. We're happy that we're here. We're happy that they're coming back. And we, again, we will absolutely provide them with a loving and nurturing environment that people love about our school district and makes us unique. As best we can, given the circumstances, you know.
Okay. Circle around one more time. Anybody have any?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I wrote them down. Going back to the schedule that's on the, on the screen now, the lunch and recess transportation block that's in the middle, when those kids get done with live in-person training, are they headed to the buses right after that to go home?
That's correct.
Or, so they're not getting lunches? It's, it's the kids that are doing the remote learning that are having that extra block of time for the lunch?
That is, that is what is, is still in the planning process where, when I referred to Mr. Altmyer and Mr. Reed about what we still have to figure out.
Okay.
Is, is if those students want lunch, if we're able to provide that, if it's a grab-and-go, how much of a lunch do we provide to them with students that are here one day and not here the next? Now we're talking about deliveries on one day where they're in-person the next, and how do we schedule that? So there's, there's a lot of intricate details that we have to iron out. So we're working on that. They're working on the behind-the-scenes, and we'll, we'll get that figured out. But it may be on the days that they're physically present, a lunch to grab and go and take home. But some of the lunches that we are sending home are, are being sent home, and they're, they need to be heated up.
Okay.
So there are some factors that we have to iron out and work through.
Yeah. We certainly want to use this as an opportunity to feed as many kids and students as we can. You know, Dr. Rowe mentioned earlier, you know, we're actually serving over 2,000 meals a day right now. 1,000 breakfast and 1,000 lunch, and we're delivering 700 or 1,400, 1,400 of those 2,000 meals per day we are delivering. And, I mean, the transportation folks, the drivers and the food services folks have done a phenomenal job getting up and running as quickly as we have to get that done. But delivering to 700 families on a daily basis, well, and that number keeps increasing every day, is one of our challenges that we need to kind of take into account here and figure out. Because once we do start coming back and we do need our drivers to deliver students, we kind of have to play this out and figure out what is the process to feed students if we can, which that's our intent, while they're in the building, while at the same time meeting the needs and the requirements of the community and the students for which we are delivering on a daily basis, and developing a process where we can account for all of those different students and needs. So that's what we're looking at now with the hopes and intents of stepping it up and doing the best we can in serving those students when they're in our buildings.
So I know with students, when they come in, they have, they do have breakfast here. Would that continue to be a thing as well? Because if learning starts at 8:30, or, you know, there won't be.
At the elementary level, breakfast is not, is not something that has been offered.
I'm sorry.
At the middle school and high school, breakfast was an option for students free and reduced, or for all students, excuse me. But, so I don't think at the elementary level, we would, you know, do that. Now, that being said, today, we are providing a breakfast and a lunch when we deliver meals. When they do curbside pickup, we are, we are handing off a breakfast and a lunch, and I think that would be the continued intent. Because when we're handing off a breakfast and a lunch, and it's 11 o'clock in the afternoon, well, that breakfast is really for the next day. So a lot of times, we are delivering for the next day.
My, my mistake on that. I apologize. And then also, I would expect a parent to ask, "Have you considered an A-B schedule that goes five days a week?" So Monday, A, Tuesday, B, Wednesday, A, Thursday, B, and then Friday goes back to A, and then the next week it flips. A, and then the next week it flips and continues on, and so it's alternating weeks with alternating days?
We did, we did. And the reason that we started the way that we did, where Wednesday was a complete remote, was our principals advocating that our teachers needed some additional collaboration time in order to pull this off. Because what has not really come out in the conversation is our elementary teachers, a good, great percentage of them are drowning right now in the amount of work that it takes to pull this off in planning for the remote instruction. And speaking as an elementary parent, the amount of live instruction that a lot of our elementary teachers are providing is over and above what we've asked of them. I could not be prouder. But, at the same time, a lot of them are also running themselves into the ground, trying to meet their own standard of excellence. And to then add on in-person and remote, our principals strongly advocated they needed a little bit of extra collaboration time to create the balancing act. And so, that was our opportunity to provide that, to provide that for them. But down the road, it certainly is an option. As we get better at this, that could be our next step, honestly.
Okay. Thank you.
Melissa, you have any more questions?
I just wanted to clarify, all schools will be starting at the same time?
Yes, all schools will be starting the same time. We thought maybe-
And so the buses will take, like, siblings that are in-
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you meant all grade levels, all schools.
Right, well, that, it's kind of, they're kind of both. Are they all, like, let's say a Chesapeake and a Martin, will they both start at 8:30? And I remember at one point, we wanted to put siblings on the same bus, do a Martin drop-off, and then a Chesapeake.
Yep.
Is that still?
So, it's, all elementaries but Martin will start at 8:30. Because we're putting Martin and Chesapeake, and we're having them be able to ride the same buses together, since they have to drop at both schools, we have to have that little buffer to drop at one, and then go around and drop at the other, and then do that pickup. So, they will have a 15-minute difference start time. So, Martin will start at 8:15, and everybody else will start at 8:30. So, pretty close, but they will be picked up at the same time from their, you know, bus stop, and then dropped off at the same time.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I'm just thinking through what you just said, and knowing that there'll probably be a lot of parent drop-off.
There will. All of our schools, if you, I'll go back to when we were planning for in-person originally, and it was primary in the design for the parking lot redesign over here at McKeven and Conley, all of our elementary schools now are prepared with the dual drop-off lane, I believe, Mr. Rinkosik? Yes, so they have the double drop-off lane to accommodate many more cars. Our principals have been trained with Mr. Rinkosik in concert with Mr. Dean from, Tim, I can't remember his last name, Tim, the traffic engineer that worked in designing our facility, our parking facilities, on how the process would work for a two-car drop-off lane and pickup lane to maximize the number of cars and flow. So, if, those that have not implemented it thus far will be doing so, and will train the cars as they come in, and we don't anticipate that being a problem.
Yep.
Especially with half the students coming each day.
Right.
In fact, we kind of, we are actually expecting the majority of our students-
Right.
-to be driven. And if it mirrors what we saw on Welcome Week, it was a 70% drive rate.
Yeah.
Which is fine.
I'm thinking, that's probably right. All right. Let everybody get their questions out. Okay, if so, that's fine. So, I do want to make a point here, that this was a, you know, this was a report presented, this is not an action item that the board is voting on. However, it doesn't mean the board isn't involved. And I would actually ask each one of you here, if, you know, if you have any concerns or issues, you know, with how the administration is going to move forward with this, that you express that now. Because it is ultimately our responsibility to, I mean, we're pretty much giving them to go ahead with this unless we say otherwise. So, I need to get an idea if there's any significant concerns with how they're moving forward, if anybody has any issues that they feel strongly about in that regard. I mean, I understand we have, we all probably have a certain level of issues, but to the point where you're like, you know, this is really, we're going in the wrong direction here. So, if you do have those kinds of concerns, you need to voice them. But, you know, like you said, this is not an action item right now. I just, I'm asking for feedback, if there's any pushback to this return to in-person learning plan that's been presented, so. If nobody has anything to state on that, we will move-
I'll just say, I'll just say, you know, I mean, I'm confident with this new plan. I know it's been difficult for a lot of families, and I understand that. I see where, back in July, we did need to take factors into consideration. And it was so much bigger of a picture than I think a lot of people realized and saw. There was a lot that went into it, numbers rising, teachers stressed. We had to factor all of that. But I think baby steps, sadly, we have to go with baby steps. But I think this is a really good stepping stone to transition back, because it is extremely important to get the kids back into the building. It's important for families, it's obviously important for the kids. And I, you know, I think this is a great first step. It's probably not what, like, you know, Leslie had said, some parents are, you know, are wanting, baby steps, but I think we're doing what needs to be done, following the guidelines, being able to meet the guidelines, working more comfortably with McHenry Department of Public Health. That is a big factor, that even up until tonight, even though I had heard it, it didn't really register in my mind, like, how important that relationship was to be working with the Department of Health. So, I'm glad that that relationship, and that they're feeling more confident with the support they can give our district. You know, I feel good about what we're doing.
Thank you for that point, because us too, it's an excellent point. Having the McHenry County Department of Public Health be able to formally make a recommendation to us, as well as offer the metrics, is a huge help. And we're really happy to be here. And again, they've been a great partner, and we're happy that they're along, they're able to support us now.
Yeah, I would agree, but, and I think you guys did the best job that you could for, you know, the information that we have and the safest way to return. I would just caution, and I just don't want to get stuck in this one hybrid model for too long. So, if the metrics are looking good, and our numbers are, you know, decreasing in the county, I really would encourage you to just have a plan ready, so that we can start increasing the days that our kids have face time in the buildings as soon as we can. I think that's what our community wants. I think that's what our children need to be for their emotional learning, and so, as long as it's in a safe and responsible way. So, I would encourage you to continue to try to work your plan up, up, up your days sooner than later. But I think it's, Melissa said it, it's the best plan we have for the circumstances. So, I applaud you guys, it's a good plan to get started.
Anything further from anybody? Okay, time to move on in the agenda. Item 15 is community relations and student outreach. We have our FOIA requests as listed. Anybody, any discussion concerning that matter? If not, we have, we'll move on to 16 Policy Committee, Policy Updates. Do you have anything in regards to the, their first reading?
Yes, there's a 16.1, we do have a first reading. Hold this up a little bit, it's kind of blind. So, we've got some press policy revision. Dr. Rowe's not in here, so is there somebody else?
Yeah, I can take this. What you're seeing here, there's some, Title IX being a big topic that's coming across a new federal law, and so you're seeing some press recommendations and updates that are happening there. Also, also some substitute teacher laws that they're extending out a little bit for 120 paid days that had expired, and they're going to put it through June 30th, 2021. Teachers, retired teachers can only sub X amount of days. And they upped that a couple years ago, so they've extended that. And then also, just some general updates that we have going on there, but Title IX is the big one that we're getting cleaned up right now.
Thank you. Did anyone have any questions?
Dr. Zier, I just, I do have one question, it just prompted me. Substitute teachers, are we in a good position? Do we have a good subpool, or has anybody been pulling?
Yeah, we do have a decent subpool, and we've got some subs working in the building so right now, as we have some FMLAs out there. Not near is what we have when we are full in, but we have built that subpool up, and we had a meeting with them at the beginning of the year, and we'll probably come back around here in the beginning of October, just to give the subs an idea of what this is going to look like, because we do know situations are going to arise where we're going to need subs in the classroom. So, like I said, that pool has grown as compared to last year, but we also haven't really tapped into that pool yet to see what that comfort level will actually be once the subs come into our environment.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, then we will move on.
We're under the consent items. Does anybody want any item removed from the consent agenda? Okay, if there's nothing to be removed, I'll make a motion to pass the consent item agenda as listed and enumerated in the, in our agenda tonight. May I have a second? Second from Mrs. Meyerino. Can we have, is there any discussion on any of these items at all? No? Okay, we'll take roll call.
Mr. Craddy?
Yeah.
Mr. Garen? Mr. Gentry? Mrs. Melendi? Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. We're on to item 19, action items. Okay, we have the hearing officer's contract, Mr. Zier.
This is the third time we'd be bringing this contract to the Board of Education, so this is a contract for hearing officer for Mr. Terry Awry. He's served as our hearing officer for the last two years, since his retirement. Essentially, this is on an as-needed basis. If we would have the unfortunate circumstance of having to bring an expulsion or some type of discipline before the board, he would serve as that officer and go through those processes. So, recommending to approve that at this meeting.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? No discussion, just, you know, we're very fortunate to have Mr. Awry continue on in this role, and we really appreciate him staying involved in the district to this extent. So, with that, I'll make a motion to approve the hearing officer contract as stated in the agenda.
Second.
Mr. Troy, you can have a second. I'll give Mrs. Melendi a second later. Okay, we have a second. Can we have roll call?
Mrs. Melendi? Mr. Gentry? Mrs. Meyerino?
Yes.
Mr. Garen? Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yeah.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 19 dot 2, we have a resolution of notice to remedy. It's listed there, I don't think, Dr. Zier, you have anything to add concerning this matter?
Uh, no, I don't.
Okay, is there any discussion concerning it? If not, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution of notice to remedy as presented. Have a second? I give a second. Mr. Garen, we have a second. Okay, can we have a roll call?
Mr. Garen? Mrs. Melendi? Mrs. Meyerino?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yeah.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Okay, item 20, Finance Committee. We have, as presented earlier in the budget meeting, before the regular meeting, we have our budget to approve for this fiscal year 2021. Is there any further discussion regarding the budget? Okay, if not, I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal 21-year budget as presented earlier this evening.
Second.
Second from Mr. Troy. A roll call.
Mr. Craddy?
Yeah.
Mr. Garen? Mr. Gentry? Mrs. Melendi? Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 20 dot 2 is supplemental purchase orders and supplemental accounts payable. Any questions on the items listed on those reports? Okay, then I'll make a motion to approve the supplemental purchase orders of $2,319,783.15, and the supplemental accounts payable amount of $47,237.54. Do I have a second? Second, Mrs. Melendi. She beat you there, Mr. Craddy. Okay, can we have roll call?
Mrs. Melendi? Mr. Gentry? Mrs. Meyerino?
Yes.
Mr. Garen? Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yeah.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Okay, item 21, Public Comments. Do we have any further public comments? Nothing sent in? Okay, and that person who left later on, she didn't have anything to fit you? Okay. Okay. Very good. I was hoping we weren't keeping her from making a public comment. Going on and on. All right. With no public comments, we are on to adjournment. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn our meeting at 10:25. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Melendi, I'll give you a second for a second time tonight. Okay. This is, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.